I answered.
Good evening, everyone.
I believe that we're ready to get started. Christina, would you?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come to tonight's council meeting. For the record, it's September 7th, 2023, and the time is 6:31 PM. I'll begin the roll call, so council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
I'm here.
Council members Stroop?
Here.
Roden?
Here.
Bliss?
Here.
Kerner?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
And Men Chow?
Present.
With seven members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. And would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, what a great turnout tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and joining us for the council meeting this evening. We do live broadcast the council meetings, so for those that didn't know, you can log on and observe the council meeting. You can't participate as part of it, but you can watch the council meeting. As part of that, the only way the individuals that are watching online can hear the comments being made is if they're made from the podium up here over the microphone. So I ask you, as part of the meeting, if you do have comments you would like to make, we'll get to everybody. But I ask that you wait till you have an opportunity to go to the microphone to make the comments so that everybody online that is watching will get the information also. And if you do have the opportunity to speak, or when you have the opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself and just state if you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident or not. We don't need your address, just if you're a resident of the city or not, okay? And to start off tonight, we have citizens to be heard. And I have one individual that did sign up for citizens to be heard. And later on in the meeting, we are going to do a public hearing related to the Chapter Four and Five UDC changes, which I believe is why the majority of the people are here tonight. And so if you'd like to wait, if you wanted to speak as part of the UDC and you'd like to wait till the public hearing, that would be great. We'll get to you then. But if there's anybody that would like to speak now as part of the citizens to be heard, then we can do that. We did have one individual that did sign up. And Rhonda Nugent, is she here? How are you tonight, ma'am?
I'm fine. I want to keep it that way. I'm Rhonda Nugent, and I'm a Fair Oaks Ranch resident. And it takes a lot to shake me, but watching the fires in Hawaii made me start thinking about, if that happened to us, what would I do? How would I prepare for something like that? I tried to get my HOA people to take on my question, and they told me, that's not our job. So I thought, well, city council's here. And I started to call the police, and I thought, I'll just let the mayor handle it. But I wondered if anybody in the city has a plan for how would Fair Oaks be evacuated in case a terrible fire happened? And you can't drive down the road and see the dead trees and the drought problems and not think about how easily a fire could spread? So I just wanted to put that out and put it on somebody's work in list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here tonight. Ms. Nugent was the only one that did sign up to speak as part of citizens to be heard. Is there anybody else that didn't get an opportunity to speak up just as part of the general council meeting for citizens to be heard that would like to speak at this time? Okay. We'll move on to presentations. We have two presentations tonight that we're doing. And first is for our police department receiving their reaccreditation certificate. And we have Chief James Kohler that's here tonight that will do the presentation. Chief Kohler is a 30-year veteran as a peace officer. He also served a lot of that with the Bernie Police Department, including, what, 10 years as the chief of police for Bernie?
Yes, sir.
And currently serves as the chief of police for Casterville. But also, he serves as the lead association or lead assessor for the Texas Police Chiefs Association Accreditation Program. And that is why he is here tonight, to present that reaccreditation program to our police force.
Thank you, Mayor and council, very much. I'd like to read this so I don't miss anything and go through this process. As you said, my name's Jim Kohler. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of over 1,700 professional police chiefs throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of quality of police services. I'm here this evening to present Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department with a certificate of reaccreditation for continuing to maintain their compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Program for the past four years. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you know about accreditation programs for schools, universities, and hospitals. They're all programs of professional excellence and all require proof of compliance with a set of professional standards. Ours is very similar. It is a voluntary program where agencies must improve. They meet or exceed 173 difficult standards. The standards are based on Texas law, Texas court decisions, and contemporary best practices identified by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations such as the use of force, protections of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, property and evidence management, patrol investigation operations, just to name a few. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. Approximately 16 years ago, the Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department first attained their accredited status with the TPCA. It wasn't easy to do, I can assure you. The agency had to conduct a complete audit of all the policies, procedures, operations in order to meet those standards. Since that time, the agency has submitted annual reports that are reviewed to ensure they continue to meet the standard and continue to provide the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch with effective police services. In June of this year, trained assessors, police chiefs, and command officers from other parts of our state spent two days conducting another assessment of the Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities, operations, met with field officers, ensured compliance with all the standards. Their report was then sent to the accreditation committee comprised of nine active police chiefs from around the state to review the report and voted to award the accredited status unanimous. And that's one of the committees that I do sit on. During this process, the Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department has once again proven they meet or exceeds the best practices for professional law enforcement in Texas. Of the 20, over 2,800 law enforcement agencies in Texas, only 197 agencies have achieved accredited status, and fewer than that have been reaccredited. This evening, we officially recognize Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department for their outstanding performance. What does this mean for the community? The accreditation program assures both city management, the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch, and their police departments operating in a manner that reflects the current best practices of Texas law enforcement. It means your police department is continually striving for professional excellence. It means your police department is one of the best in the state. This certificate we present this evening is symbolic, while it's clearly marked professional excellence. The real value of the program is the process they must complete to receive that certificate. And once again, this is not the end of the process. The department will continue to submit annual reports to assure compliance. And in four years, we'll be back for another onsite inspection to ensure the agency is continuing to comply with all those standards. The Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department is a leader in law enforcement in Texas. You should be very proud of their accomplishments. Lieutenant Ojeda, can I please present you with the plaque? There you are.
Yeah.
I'd also like to recognize Chief Pritchard. He's over there, he's representing the Texas Police Chiefs Association as well. I can assure you, this is not a rubber stamp. We sit on the committee, make those tough decisions. And sometimes, police agencies don't get it. Going through the reaccreditation is a nerve-wracking situation to go through. I've been there, done that. It's not easy. It's truly not easy, and I think it is the gold standard in policing. So y'all should be very proud, very proud. Thank y'all.
Thanks, chief. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
We have one other presentation, thanks, chief. One other presentation tonight, Brian. It's a recognition of our IT professionals and signifying September 19th as our IT Professionals Day. I'm trying to find a way where I can stand that I'm not in the way. You have individuals, and I'm sure everybody's seen those, that work for you and work a lot behind the scenes. And sometimes, their jobs can be very challenging and only get recognized when there are complications or problems that we all face. And although we all know who Brian Lejeune is, and Jason's not here tonight, so we have a two-man team that ensures that we maintain the infrastructure of our IT that supports city operations. But I think one of the areas that they spend a lot of their time with is the security measures to ensure that our system doesn't get infected by others that, from outside us, that would like to take advantage of our systems. And that includes a lot of, you know, you would think the internet and those things, but also, our water system is a very significant area that we need to make sure that we maintain the security of. And that's another area that Brian and his team ensures that they take care of. So they're professionals behind the scenes making things happen, but we don't, generally don't get recognized because if everything goes right, then we're happy. It's only when things are bad, right? So today, we're going to recognize September 19th as IT Professionals Day. And whereas Information Technology Professionals Day has been celebrated on the third Tuesday of every September since 2015, and whereas this year it falls on September 19th, 2023, and whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch wants to recognize the IT experts to ensure that the city's computers, our applications, our storage, our networking, our infrastructure, and our processes to create, store, secure, and exchange all forms of electronic data are performing at optimal levels. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch ID Department consists of two employees, that being the IT manager, Brian Lejeune, and network specialist, Jason McDonald. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch ID Department oversees software programs for the city with the goal of ensuring smooth, efficient, and around-the-clock operations for all of city departments, including city council, building codes, city secretary, engineering, finance, human resources, and communications, municipal court, public safety, public works, and utilities. Pretty small job, right? Whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch ID Department provides 24/7 support for telecommunications systems, cell phones, internet firewall, servers, desktops, laptops, camera systems, tablets, switches, et cetera, for both office and field personnel. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch ID Department continues to focus on identifying and meeting new challenges in key areas such as cybersecurity, state and federal guidelines for data management and security, and shifting technology trends. And as now and therefore is the mayor of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, we do hereby designate September 19th, 2023, as IT Professionals Day. I urge all citizens to express their appreciation to our IT team members for their dedication and commitment to Fair Oaks Ranch, the city council employees, and all the residents of our city. Thank you very much, Brian, to you and Jason for all that you did.
By the way, my email's down. I forgot my password.
One more, all right. With that, then we'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. We do have four items on the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is the approval of the August 17th, 2023, regular city council meeting minutes. The second item is the approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Unified Development Code, this being Chapters One, Chapter Two, and Chapters Three. And then the third item, approval of a resolution reaffirming the city's investment policy. And the fourth item, approval of council member Parker's absence from the September 21st and the October 5th regular city council meetings. Is there any council member that would like to pull an item from consent to consideration? With that, then, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, moved.
I second.
Chesley, motion, and Laura, a second. With that all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank y'all. All right. Now with that, we're going to move on to the public hearing. The City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, will conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony on proposed amendments to the following chapters in the Unified Development Code. These include Chapter Four, which is zoning districts and use regulations, and Chapter Five subdivision and design standards. Before I open this up for public comment, I would like to make a couple comments. First thing that stands out to me is, thank y'all for everybody that has come to the public hearing tonight. And it really stands out to me that Fair Oaks Ranch is a unique city. We want to keep it that way, and our residents will fight to ensure that we do that. So I appreciate y'all being here tonight and for the comments that you'll provide as part of the public hearing. I'm guessing that most of y'all want to speak about tonight, you know, the proposed changes to the Unified Development Code, those primarily related to commercial and non-commercial stables. Coming from me and my comments, bottom line upfront, is I do not agree with the recommended changes for commercial and non-commercial stables. Now, I have not discussed this with the other council members because we're prevented from doing that due to the Texas Open Meetings Act outside of council meetings. So my belief is, is that all the council members see it very similar to the way I see it. And I do not anticipate that these changes that were provided will be approved tonight. All right? All right, so hold on a second. So now, I think everybody knows that this all came from our city's Planning and Zoning Commission, that they provided these recommendations to city council. Now, our Planning and Zoning Commission has conducted a review of the UDC, and they have been doing this for almost two years now. And there were some requirements of why this needed to be accomplished. Now, our members of the PNZ, they are residents of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. And I honestly and truly believe that their overall intent and the overall focus of what the PNZ accomplished was for the betterment of our city and for the future of our city. They were protecting what we need to do for the future of our city. And everybody knows we have challenges protecting the future of our city. There are developers out there that want to take advantage of us. And I believe that was the intent of what PNZ was focused on. But as a result of that, there were some unintended consequences which came from that. My belief, we can correct those. Now, the UDC is a document that protects our future, the future of Fair Oaks Ranch, which is important. And so before approving any changes or updates to our Unified Development Code, I firmly believe that we need to ensure that we get it right before we approve it. So we have a public hearing tonight. Tonight, we want to hear your comments related to the proposed changes to Chapter Four and Chapter Five of the Unified Development Code. And that honestly is why we are here tonight, is to hear your comments. Now, there are two portions to what we will consider tonight. First is the public hearing, which we're about to go into. During that process, we'll have a presentation from Lada, kind of give us an overview of the process and what we're going through. I'll open it up for public comments, and then council will have an opportunity to make some comments at that time also. There will be no decisions made during the public hearing. It's an information collection process. When we finish that, though, we'll close the public hearing, and then we're moving directly into a consideration item. And it is that time that council will have the discussion of how we're going to move forward with the recommended changes that have been provided to us as part of Chapters Four and Chapter Five. During the consideration item, and this is normal for all consideration items that we do, I open it back up for public comments. So at that time, if there were other individuals that would like to make comments, there will be an opportunity during the consideration item, okay? I do thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is the largest crowd that I've seen since I've been on council, and I appreciate the effort in being part of the process. If you do want to speak tonight as part of the council meeting, everyone will get the opportunity to do that. I do ask that, as we go through this process, that everybody be respectful. We're all residents, we're all part of the community, we're all part of the same team. We want to hear the information. I promise you that the council members that are up here, including myself, is that we will listen and we will take seriously the value and the input that you are providing to us. That's why we are here. I do ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. It's one of the requirements that we have. I am not going to put anybody on a stopwatch so that at five minutes, we cut them off. But if it gets to five minutes and you're looking pretty strong, I may ask you to help wind it up, okay? In respectful also. And then, as I mentioned, when you do make comments and if we get, you know, we can't have dialogue going back and forth from somebody at the microphone and people sitting in the room. So I ask that you please hold all your comments so that they can be made from the microphone. So those, you know, if there's this many people here, we probably have twice as many that have logged in and are watching the meeting, and we want them to be able to hear the comments also. And that covers it all. So we are ready to move into the public hearing. Christina, I have the time now, is 6:53, and I will open the public hearing. And first, we will hear from Lada. And if people are following along, we do have a staff packet or a council packet, and the presentation Lada is going to present is on page 347 of the packet.
Good evening, mayor, council, residents of Fair Oaks Ranch staff. My name is Lata Krishnaro, and I'm here to make this presentation regarding the proposed unified development changes. Christina is going to pull up the PowerPoint presentation. And I will keep my presentation short so that you all have more time to express your comments. So the mayor explained the process. As he indicated, during the public hearing, there's not much of a discussion. Once, I will make my presentation, and then after the presentation is done, the mayor is going to call on the citizens to speak for or against the proposed amendments and share your thoughts. The public hearing will get closed, and then the city council will discuss the amendments. There is no decision that's going to be made at the public hearing. So the action item is listed separately in the agenda, and at that time, the council will make a decision on how to move forward. I'm just going to start with the introduction. As the agenda item states, these are proposed amendments to Chapter Four and Five of the Unified Development Code. Chapter Four addresses zoning districts and use regulations. And that's where the commercial stable part is located in the land use table. And Chapter Five discusses subdivision design standards. There you go. Thank you. So there were some supporting documents in the agenda packet. They included the proposed changes. And then we also summarized the significant changes as the council had requested. So Planning and Zoning Commission looked at the list, and then we brought it back to the council. So just briefly, what is the? So just briefly, what is the goal of these amendments? One is, the UDC was adopted in 2019, and since then, there have been some changes at the state and federal level, and some in the city charter. So the first review that was done was to make sure that the Unified Development Code was in compliance with all these documents. Second, as the mayor stated, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been working over the past two years, looking at all the recommendations in the UDC, and also making sure that the City of Fair Oaks Ranch adopted a comprehensive plan just before the Unified Development Code was adopted in 2019. And that was a process which involved all the citizens. So one of the things that the P&amp;Z did was make sure that some of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan were carried over in the Unified Development Code, because Unified Development Code is where the regulations are. And also, the third part of this exercise was to make sure that the entire Unified Development Code went through a legal review, a very thorough legal review, to make sure that there were not any other issues that might affect the city in the future. So Chapter Four, some important things that Chapter Four contains is, that was discussed widely, was the conservation development alternative. What it is, is a method of development where homes can be clustered so that you have larger open spaces. And so there was a lot of discussion on that, and the recommendations that you see came from those discussions. There were some discussions on setbacks for mixed-use village, neighborhood, commercial, community facilities, which are all commercial districts, and then also for neighborhood residential and rural residential. And again, a lot of that discussion was based on Fair Oaks Ranch has a hill country character. How do you define hill country character? And to preserve hill country character, what do developments in Fair Oaks Ranch need to look like so that you have that, the trees and the natural environment versus another development that might happen in any other part of the country? So P&amp;Z actually did a lot of review on that. They looked at other city ordinances, tried to define what exactly was hill country character, and that's where you see some of these recommendations that stem from that discussion. There was also discussion on driveway location and buffers. Basically, a lot of it had to do with drive-through facilities, and how do you treat them in Fair Oaks Ranch so that any new development that's commercial is not adversely impacting existing residential? And then, of course, the land use table, which went through all the uses that are permitted in the various zones, and P&amp;Z did a thorough review and identified some that they thought needed to be changed. And then, the last one that you see there is the commercial and non-residential stables and boarding. And then, Chapter Five included basically subdivision design standards, and there was not a lot of changes there except for flag laws, just some definitions were missing, and then some missing requirements for cul-de-sac and block land standards. Staff had identified that there were some things in the old subdivision regulations that were not transferred to the new subdivision regulations that were included in the UDC. So some of those were identified and included here. So Planning and Zoning Commission, as I said, worked very hard on this document, and they've recommended changes. They did address the non-commercial stables boarding issue after their work session, and what you see before you is what came out after that discussion. So they did try to make it clearer and make some changes there. And all these changes have been incorporated in the red line and clean versions. These are on the city's website, and also included in the proposed ordinance. So that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thanks, Lada. Any questions from council members? Okay, we'll move on with comments tonight. And so city council receives testimony for, against the proposed amendments. And was Al Schmidt here tonight? He provided, and that's why I was asking, he provided a letter that he asked to be read as part of the public comments, and said he may attend. The letter that was provided from Al Schmidt, former council member for the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, and also currently still is a resident of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. He writes, "If I cannot come to the council meeting, please read my comments into the record. My questions, comments are, number one, what prompted the need for the change? In my eight years on the council up to the present, I'm not aware of any complaints about horses. Two, is this a solution looking for a problem? Number three, the culture of the city has been built on its unique aspects that includes wildlife and large areas that have livestock and horses. Why would horses now be singled out in these draft restrictions? Next, many of the city's streets names are for famous horses or racetracks, which include Keeneland Racetrack is an active racetrack in Kentucky. Even if current owners are grandfathered, their property values would be significantly hurt. This appears to be a consultant's copy of another city's policy with no consideration given to the type of city we have. I've been told that there were no discussions of this with our residents or horse owners. And last, there is no need to restrict the current or future owners. I recommend that this document be returned to the P&amp;Z for deletion and those horse restrictions, for deletion of these horse restrictions. Signed, Al Schmidt." And then I have a number of people that have signed up to speak as part of the public hearing, and first is Ms. Pennington.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Pennington. I live on 30845 Ventura, and I just want to ditto everything that Al just said. I don't think there, I would repeat it all if I could, but I've lived here for 30-plus This is just ridiculous, and I want everyone to know that if you have a problem with the horses, then you probably shouldn't live here. There's plenty of places to live that don't have horses, and there's a lot of place in Fair Oaks that you can live, and you don't have to even see a horse. So I just, and we're called Fair Oaks Ranch for a reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Shawna Verrett.
Thank you. Just like she said, I would ditto that letter. I'll just add a couple of things to it. When looking to move our family here, I'm originally from San Antonio, but we were in the military, moved back, and we picked Fair Oaks specifically for its atmosphere, for the city life, but ranch life. So we live on 10 acres on Silver Spur. We have horses, and my kids raise goats for 4H, and I can't tell you the number of friends who just love coming to our house because they live in a subdivision, and their kids are not able to be around any of the animals and stuff. I think that the commercial stables and stuff do a really good job of maintaining what they have, and they keep it beautiful out here. We are very unique. And so, we also, going back to, the HOA does a really good job of enforcing animal rules and regulations or whatever. And when you look at your deed restrictions, we are broken down into different zones. And when I was looking to buy, I actually looked at all those deed restrictions and figured out which area I could live in with my animals and my kids and have a happy house. In my deed restrictions, the only animal that I cannot have are hogs. Totally understandable. I raised pigs in high school, and they are destructive, and if not maintained properly, it's terrible. But anyways, so I strongly agree with that. I'm opposed to any of the changes. I don't know if I understood it properly, but it sounded like even non-commercial individuals who have horses would not be able to utilize part of their property if it's facing a street. That would literally take away about five of my acres. And so, that's not conducive to my environment, nor is it to anybody else here that owns horses or animals. And I think that all of us who own the horses and goats and animals, we take pretty good care of our property. It's not trash. I mean, it looks terrible right now because of the drought, but I think everybody does. So that's all I'd like to add.
Thank you. Next, I have Vincent Gould.
Hello, city council and everyone in the Fair Oaks Ranch community. My name is Vince Gould. I live off Post Oak Trail, relatively new to the area. Kind of just moved from the outskirts of San Antonio, like Leon Springs area. And part of the reason why my wife and I wanted to move to this area, as people have already voiced, is that, you know, Fair Oaks Ranch is like a very unique community, has kind of like, you know, that semi-country feel. And my wife and I grew up in, you know, in small towns and had horses and et cetera, and was around livestock. And part of the appeal, you know, moving here was, you know, it's a privilege to live here, it's a beautiful, beautiful community, and wanted to give my kids opportunity to kind of be around livestock and what have you. I work in San Antonio, one of the major hospitals, and kind of coming home and being out here in this like brush of fresh air and green space and trails, and that's really unique. And, you know, I was very kind of shocked when I saw the proposed recommendation, so I, you know, I would probably strongly go against that, and just to echo the young lady that spoke a minute ago, yeah, would probably compromise a lot of our acreage too. So that's my piece, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Gabrielle Fuentes.
My name is Gabe Fuentes, and I lived in Fair Oaks for about 30 years as well. And so, I live off Metal Creek Trail, and that's one of the reasons I moved out here. I bought my property at night, 10:30 at night. Saw the fences, I said, this is here, I'm in heaven. And I giggle all the way home every afternoon. I don't have a horse, but I'm going to buy one now. I do, however, have livestock, and so I know that anybody that has livestock maintains because they know if they get out, they're in trouble, and the Fair Oaks Police Department will come find you. So I do know that. And they take good care of them, so if they do get loose, they'll take care of them. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Exactly right. And that's what I had to say, is I'm ready for horses.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Laura Oakey, and I am a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch. Even though I am not a horse owner, I am here to support my fellow residents who are horse owners. Anybody who has driven through the north or south parts of Fair Oaks Ranch where there are horse properties zoned, it's very immediately notable that most, if not all, of those properties have pastures that abut a road in our city. So it is my hope that the language that was proposed by the P&amp;Z Commission that would prevent the future use of those pastures, as well as their definition of a non-commercial farm, it's my hope that that was in fact an oversight by the P&amp;Z Commission or a misunderstanding of theirs. And so I do ask that you, the members of our city council, reject that language as it stands, and send it back to the P&amp;Z Commission for modifications that will act.
Okay, well, the point is that I oppose all these changes that are going on, and I remind the council that when the original zoning that was put in by the other council, they didn't talk to any of the public. They just sat there by themselves and did zoning and had no idea what they're really affecting. I'm the restrictions chair of K8 and C5. That's both sides of Ventura, and the restrictions that they have in this thing here don't even closely match. And claiming that the 40-acre property on the other side, which is, I think, NR or whatever you call it here, is supposed to be all the way down to some small acreage, we've had an awful lot of people trying to buy, prop those 40 acres and put 30, 40 houses over there. And that would destroy all the value of our property across the street. And if they hadn't come up with this magical number, we wouldn't be having all these developers thinking they can develop dozens of homes across the street, and even propose to put up stone walls and stuff between us and the rest of the property. All that area there on Ventura is horse property. It's been that way since the city started. We have restrictions on that property that call mostly for five-acre properties that face the street. And all this business about putting in more roads and more houses, you're just going to destroy all the cost and property that we have on the other side. So I'm fully opposed to this idea, and I think maybe the original restrictions need to be looked at, or the zoning, because it doesn't reflect anything that's in our area, and we were never asked.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Marshall Denny.
Hey, good evening. Marshall Denny, I live off Relling Acres Trail. So first off, I oppose, completely agree with the letter. Some color to the letter would be, I don't believe any of the horse property owners were consulted. So most of that letter I agree with are the questions. Why? Why? Where'd this come from? None of us were consulted. So I feel like the information used for the analysis is inaccurate or incomplete. And that in and of itself should mean it gets tabled at a minimum. And that in and of itself should mean it gets tabled at a minimum. So I don't need to spend five minutes to say that, but I do need to also say, you know, as taxpayers who, you know, in whole recognition of the regulations and zonings and all those things, what it does to property values is pretty important. You know, I personally grew up in the military, then I was in the military for three, almost three decades, and we decided to retire here and did that with our eyes wide open on a horse property where we could stop moving every two years and allow kids to grow up with animals, compete in FFA and rodeos and all that. And so this is devastating to property values. Whether you're gonna die here and have an estate, or this is a waystation to your next chapter, it's pretty significant financially on families. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Desi Dior Sagna. Did I say that?
Good evening. I'm glad to see Mr. Weir here because at least there's somebody older than me that's still here in Fair Oaks. I've been here 38 years, and I was here before it was incorporated. But I bought out here because I had a 25-year-old horse that needed a place to go, and my childhood dream was to do combined training, and so I planned on getting additional horses. The property I bought on Meadow Creek Trail was billed as a horse property. It was bought as a horse property. It was used as a horse property for 10 years. And then when I got too old and decrepit to jump horses, I started raising sheep on the property, which now has a few sheep, a few donkeys, and is under wildlife management. So I've come full circle. But mainly, I wanted to come up here and show you, well, this is an aerial photograph from 1994 of my property. And you probably can't see it very well from where you're sitting, but about two-thirds of the property would not be usable if any of these, if these regulations for non-commercial horse properties came into effect, because there's a huge front pasture that borders Meadow Creek Trail, and then the middle pasture has access to the road frontage. So about two-thirds of the property would not be usable. Just want to remind everybody about the, I think it's like 11 miles of horse trails we have out here. I don't know if anybody's mentioned that yet, but that's something that it's like, why are those trails there if not for us to use with our horses? You know, or your horses. I have donkeys now. They're not the same, let me tell you. I think that's all I wanted to say. I'll probably, Scott's my neighbor, so he's put up with me for most of that time. But yeah, I just mainly wanted y'all to, you know, I figured a picture was worth a thousand words, so that's all.
Thank you. Next, Steve Akins.
I am Steve Akins, and I am another Meadow Creek Trail resident. I don't have the size lot as some of the people out there do. We've got about six and a half acres. Behind my house is probably about one acre, maybe. I've got five horses out there. I need that side space. I can't have it taken away from me. I'll try not to go over the things that some of the other people have said, but everything so far has been said very well. One of the things that has been mentioned quite a bit is the, is the value of our properties, the horse property owners. I don't know what these people are thinking that brought these ideas down, but it ain't just our properties that values that are gonna suffer. I don't know where y'all live, but if you have a smaller house and smaller lot, your property values are gonna be affected as well. Also see some business people in here from around our area. They're gonna be affected greatly by the loss of our animals or the animals associated with these properties. So everything's been said, and I hear what you said about not expecting this to go through, but God, if it does, we're, there's gonna be a lot of people in the world hurt in this, in this city. It's called, as was mentioned earlier, it's called ranches for a reason, and it sounds like they're going away.
Thank you, sir. Tim Taylor.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna start off by saying I'm aggravated and really irritated, but I'm also inspired, seeing so many people here in support of what we care about. I spoke at the P&amp;Z Committee, and I thought I made an impassioned plea to save the horses and protect what was going on. Apparently, it did not stick. I don't know what happened, but if you can't tell how much this has aggravated people, then you're blind, okay? Not only am I inspired by the people that live here that have come out, there are people that are here that don't live here, that board horses in our community, that care so much about it, they've supported us today. There are business owners from Strudie's that are here because they care. Nobody wants to see what's going on, the direction that this seems to be taking. Now, I'm gonna touch on a point that I think needs to be addressed, and that's our ability to use our properties as we see fit. And people brought up, you know, raising goats, raising cattle. Can they sell a goat? I've got chickens. Can I sell my eggs? That's commercial use of agriculture. That's not allowed right now in the UDC. That needs to change. Now, I live on 45 acres in Fair Oaks. I had to jump through hoops. It was an arduous and expensive process to get my special use permit to board a few horses at my place. Now, if you don't think some of your neighbors board a horse right now, you're wrong. They're in violation of what the UDC is saying. If I breed a horse and train it and want to sell it, the city will not allow me. I'm in violation. That's wrong. Now, the state, September 1st of 2023, has passed the HB 17, I wrote them down, 1750, 2308, 2947. You can have your city attorney look at those, but that's the right-to-farm statute, and it says that agriculture is protected. The selling of livestock, the raising of livestock, if I want to bail hay right now on my place and sell it, I can't. That's wrong. We should have the people that have 10 acres, that have a barn that holds eight horses, be able to keep four of their own and be able to board four others. And I'm telling you what, the boarding facility that we have, we get calls every day from people that need a place to keep their horse. Fair Oaks is valuable to this entire area. It's valuable to us. You need to do more to support the horse properties than to restrict them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nancy Logan.
Hi, my name's Nancy Logan. I have a horse, but it is not on my property. I want to express my strongest desire to retain the character of Fair Oaks Ranch by maintaining the qualities which distinguish it from other country club communities, to include lot sizing and horse or animal properties. Each of the major golf course communities in this area have their own character. The Dominion is beautiful, but it is very formal. It's not a ranch. Cordiera is lovely, but they're large lots, and there's no sense of community like we have. Sunterra is a city community. It's, they are all unique qualities. People pick where they live based on what they want from their community. Fair Oaks, to me, has the qualities of openness of larger lots, but with a true community that incorporates horses, golf, bike riding, tennis, pickleball, fishing, hiking, parks and rec, picnic areas. It's an amazing community. It needs to hold its character. Part of the charm is that there's also little subdivisions that have different qualities, like the north, the north area and the horse communities in the south. Dense clustering of homes like, sorry, across on Keeneland, across from Holly's place, where they put in a gazillion homes where you can barely look at, huge houses on tiny lots, to me, don't belong in Fair Oaks Ranch. They belong. People need them. Does not fit Fair Oaks, my opinion. Furthermore, I have concerns about increased impervious surfaces, which diminish the benefits of rain and increase the heat dome effect, reduce trees, grasses, and habitat for critters, and takes water, which we all know we don't have enough of. It is not, it does not belong. We've got to keep bigger lot sizes, in my opinion. But my primary concern has to do with the quality and character of horses, donkeys, goats, chickens, whatever other animals that people enjoy on their property. This community has embraced horses and grown with that in its culture. The famous racehorses and racetracks areas of Fair Oaks Ranch, that's very old and was part of the development when it even started. The Back Forty has horse properties all over, with grazing along the roads in the front and the sides and the backs of their property. The trail system was set up to accommodate horses. I do love horses, but so do other people, even non-horse people. I cannot imagine somebody driving by a pasture, looking at horses grazing or foals running and playing and thinking, "How disgusting is that?" Who gets offended by looking at horses in a pasture? It's crazy. I don't even know how this got going. The most obvious is Dr. Holly McKeon's property on the corner of Venture and Keeneland. How many people drive by with their golf carts and their kids and everybody and look at the baby horses playing? I mean, this is, this is part of the charm of our country. And if someone has a barn which can house horses other than their own, why shouldn't they be able to offer a friend a place to stable their horse? Who's being harmed? Not everyone can house horses on their property, including myself, so why not allow people to share their barn and get paid for their cost, time, and effort to maintain the horses? Isn't it coming together, isn't coming together for the benefit of each other what a community is supposed to be about? Let it be. Furthermore, people in Fair Oaks can bring their, moved here because they wanted to bring their horses with them. 4-H, FFA, people who just love horses or donkeys or goats or meanies gather here. Why would people do that? What would people do with their already established animals? What would they do? What are they, what are they gonna do with their critters? These animals already live here, and the property owners have a right to keep their animals. I don't know who benefits from this. I don't, I don't get it. I don't even know why this is an issue. But if developing is gonna squish the lots, we've lost the ranch. This is Fair Oaks Ranch, and it's full of charm and character. It is not Fair Oaks Metropolitan Center. Keep the lot sizes from shrinking. Leave the trees in the open spaces. Leave the horses and the folks who tend to or board them. At best, horses bring beauty, peacefulness, and pleasure to the residents, and at worst, they can be ignored. Keep the ranch part of Fair Oaks Ranch.
Thank you, ma'am. Eric Mitchell.
Actually, everything that I would say has been said, so.
Okay, thank you. John McKeon.
Hi, I'm John McKeon. I live at the corner of Venture and Keeneland. We have eight acres. My wife is Holly McKeon, and I want to speak about both commercial stables and non-commercial stables, because under the definitions that the Planning and Zoning Commission has come up with, I don't know which one we are. We have six horses on eight acres. We have them for recreational purposes. That's the primary purpose. We have the kids ride them. One is a lawn ornament because she's retired. She's done being ridden. Occasionally, we breed. We have a stud, and we have some females, and occasionally, we put them together and get babies. And the year that we, when we have babies, the kids, we enjoy teaching the kids about raising the babies. They come out in the middle of the night after the baby's born and see what it looks like, and then they help during the six months that we're nursing that baby until the baby is off the property. And when, we can't keep all these horses, so sometimes if the horse can't do his job anymore, the kids outgrow the horse. We had a pony once. We don't have a pony anymore because the kids don't ride ponies anymore. We can't give them away. We can't afford to give things away, so we have to sell them. Does that make us a commercial operation? When that baby grows up six months old, we can't, we can't have 10 horses on eight acres. We gotta sell it. We're not selling it to make a profit. We're selling it to get some of the money back that we put into 11 months of gestation and six months of nursing and the medicine that goes into that and the procedures and the feed and all that. So anyway, under this definition, the definition is so broad, it covers anything you could do with livestock and get money for, because this is compensation. So the UDC currently has, in the use table, it has a line for commercial stables and boarding activities. Well, it's in there already, but it was never defined. Well, if you have to define it, fine. That's fine. All these different activities are fine, but instead of saying for compensation, let's say for the primary purpose of, as a business, or primarily for compensation. Not, that way, it doesn't capture every single person has a horse or a pig or a goat or whatever is, fits as livestock. Because if I'm now a commercial operation, I've got to get a special use permit, and I've got to raise my fence line from four feet to six feet. Most of our property goes down Keeneland, and we raise it two feet. It's gonna be very expensive, and nobody's gonna be able to pet the horses anymore or feed the horses or take pictures of the horses or sometimes climb on the fence. And that's a problem. The, well, it's a problem for us, and maybe, you know, somebody can say, "Oh, you're a grandfather. You're a nonconformist." Well, it doesn't matter, because if I'm in nonconformity, you know, I don't know exactly how long I get to be a nonconformist. I don't care, because someday, the property's gonna be sold, and whoever's gonna buy it, I can't sell it as a horse property. They can't use it as a horse property without moving the fence line, because when I built it or when we put the fence up, we've met all of our restrictions, and we met everything the city's required us to do, and in places, it's on the property line, and that was okay. But now we've got to move the fence 50 feet away from the property line and our barn. I don't think our barn is 50 feet from the property line in one place. So I gotta move the barn or tell the next owner to move the barn? That's crazy. Non-commercial use of stables, that's a terrible name. If it's commercial, what's the opposite? Well, first of all, why do we need this? Why do we need to single out horses under the commercial stuff? We talk about livestock as a definition, but then we have all these restrictions that only apply to horses. Livestock includes mules, donkeys, cows, pigs, oh, no pigs. Forget the pigs. Goats, sheep. Sorry, I forgot about the sheep. Anyway, what's the problem with horses? There should be a good reason if we're gonna regulate the horses, and if we have to regulate them, fine, regulate them. But let's only do it if we have to. It's a lot of money to take care of any kind of law. It's a lot of money to take care of any kind of livestock. The people that own these animals have a lot invested in it, so they're taking care of them, and they're taking care of their property so that they can provide the property for the animals. So, I don't know that we need a lot of regulation, but, but that's not my call to make, that's the, your call to make. But, the regulations may be a bit reasonable. So, I don't even think we need a category other than the commercial. If you are, again, first of all, why are we singling out horses? I've seen donkeys, I've seen cows, I've seen, I haven't seen the sheep yet, but I've seen all sorts of critters in addition to the horses, but what's the problem with horses? But if you're going to single them out, then, then let's call it what it is. It's, don't call it non-commercial stables boarding. First of all, boarding means you're doing it for pay, okay? Regardless, it's recreational, or it's pleasure, or it's hobby, right? That's the opposite of a commercial, or let's call it what it really is, personal, private use of your animal, okay? And then these restrictions are crazy. A minute, well, this one's minimum of one, one half acre, okay, before you can have a horse, and then a half acre per horse, so you have to have two acres, have a horse. I don't have a problem with that, until I read what the requirement is for commercial boarding facilities. You can have two horses on one acre. So you have two acres, you can have four horses. But for my property, if I have two acres, I can only have, the math isn't wrong, I'd get less horses if I had private property, not trying to make money with it, than if it's commercial. And that, 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 that doesn't make sense. And then, horses can only be kept in backyards or side yards that do not face a street. Well, you just destroyed my property value, and all the properties, when you, when you go down Post Oak Road, Rolling Acres, you can go onto Meadow Creek, you can go on, even on to Robindale, people have horses in the front, you know, people have horses in the side yard, just because it's a ranch, all right? That's what the city was founded. Ralph Fair's stable is across the street and down the street from where I live. I live where they used to grow hay for the horse track. That is where Cheryl Pennington is. And then the last one, maximum of six horses by right for my private use, I can only have six horses. Well, that, that's fine for me, for the size of our property, eight acres, but for somebody who's got twenty acres, you're telling them you can only have six horses, and then you have to go get a special use permit. Well, why? If they got twenty acres, they got more room, they can have more than six horses. But in addition to that, the proposed fee changes that are included in this package that the city council's reviewing, has, if you want to go get a special use permit, it costs you eight hundred dollars to start, and then fifty dollars per acre. So for me, if I have to go get a special use permit, because our horse is going to have a baby and I want to sell the horse, or somebody wants to, us to take care of the horse for a week while they're away, and we want to charge them for the feed, I have to spend twelve hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars plus eight acres times forty dollars, uh, what did I say? It was fifty dollars. It comes out to four hundred dollars. So it's twelve hundred dollars for me to go ask the city, can I have a couple more horses on my property? That, that doesn't make sense. So what I recommend is fix the definition of commercial, just simplify, keep the first sentence, but change or compensation to primarily for business purposes, or primarily for profit, compensation, whatever, but that's the primary purpose, is you're doing it from, exchange for money. And there's nothing bad about that, it's just, call it what it is. And then, get rid of all this other stuff. But if you're going to regulate horses, then the P&amp;Z Commission should talk to a collection of people from all different parts of Fair Oaks Ranch, because we, we don't all have the same situation. Some people have goats, some people have horses, some people have lots of things, and we have different sized properties. So, talk to the people before you come up with the rules. So that's my, probably seven minutes, sorry.
And thank you, sir. Next, I have Keith Casey.
Good evening. Keith Casey, 30875 Ventura. He just mentioned where the old Ralph Fair Stables, they're off Ventura, and just wanted to thank you for your opening comments. Appreciate you taking the community comments about this. Obviously, a lot of people are passionate about horses. I personally am not passionate about horses, but I'm married to that lady right there, thirty-five years, happy life, happy wife, she's passionate about horses, therefore, I am passionate about horses. And I think that whole row of folks there is all the people that are passionate about horses at 30875 Ventura. So, just, everything's been well said, you did a great job about making the case in point. I agree, I, I think this is a problem, looking for a solution, and I think it's good to just think back about the history of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, which I never thought I'd be speaking on behalf of tech, horses and keeping horses in Texas, that's why we get irritated, right? Kind of football, is the next thing we're going to go after? Long story short, you know, ever since Ralph Fair Senior put his stamp on here, the foundation of this community has been ranch, right? And I think you said it well, keep ranch in Fair Oaks Ranch. And it's about that ethos, it's about the riding trails, it's about being able to be around livestock, teach your children respect, integrity, care for others, community, and that's why people come to Fair Oaks Ranch, that's why we're part of Fair Oaks Ranch, and that's why everybody's here, and that's why they're passionate about it. So, I just, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's the other thing, I think we all recognize communities need to continue to grow and evolve, right? And the Planning and Zoning Commission, unfortunately, by the way they put these rules out, they're destroying that ethos in service for what seems to be a very urban development. And that's not the way for us to grow and evolve, that's not what the community wants, and that's not what the community deserves. So, I just implore you, go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and say, "You missed the mark." The real question is, how can Fair Oaks Ranch maintain that rich history and ethos around equestrian activities, livestock, and the ranch kind of foundation, and continue to grow and evolve? Because these regulations do not do that at all, so I think you should reject them in entirety, send them back, and give them a new mission and a new question to answer. Thank you for your time.
Rena Grona. Should I apologize?
First, I'm not a horse owner. I live on Rolling Acres. I, I moved to Fair Oaks, my family moved to Fair Oaks, after I started working in two thousand and five as a Realtor with Bradfield Properties. And those who have been here for years know Bradfield Properties are off, we office off of Dietzel Corn and Fair Oaks Parkway. After that time is when I decided to move out here. I loved the community. My husband's a police officer of City of San Antonio for thirty years. We didn't want to live in the city. I wanted to live where we had some elbow room, still within ten minutes from HEB. Just have that, have that ability. You know, we're talking about history. I brought, and I provided it to Chelsea. When I started as a Realtor here in Fair Oaks, one of the things that us Realtors were given by Forha was a four-page document that had the history of Fair Oaks. And on here, it discusses everything that Ralph Fair wanted for this ranch. And it started in the thirties, it started in the forties, when he registered the Hereford Cattle, where Battle Intense is named after. And that's what we need to maintain. You know, one of the biggest, you know, my daughter is now a sophomore at Bernie High School, she's an FFA. One of the biggest things about our Back Forty is that, yes, we have property and we're not elbow, you know, right, close to our neighbors, but when we need something, we get onto that Back Forty page, and she needed a way to help raise, she's, she's raising sheep now for FFA, Officer and FFA. Our neighbors came in, helped us with sheds, helped us with anything we needed to maintain the spirit of Fair Oaks Ranch. When I was selling this property out here, back in two thousand and five, people wanted to be out here because they could have the horses. My daughter, last year, my ten-year-old, had an excuse to be late for school. Why? Because we saw a horse running down Ammon Road and we had to stop and hold him down. I called Jaden Denny, Marshall Denny's daughter, who's a barrel racer, and said, "Can you come?" I have nothing to, I don't know how to control this horse, can you come get this horse? That was the way, we were able to do that. Five people stopped, people that had, whatever, bridles in their car to get this horse off the road. It's what, it's what we are. If you want to maintain it, what we, what the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to do is stop talking about enlarging our roads, stop talking about the denser populations. We don't want another front gate in the Back Forty. We don't want another, it's, we want the bigger properties, that's why we all moved out here. And again, back to the value of people's properties, the Denny's, you know, and I, and I say, I use them just because they're neighbors, and, and I know them well, they go to sell their property, their property value is shot, because they have a barn, they have an arena, and they face the road on two sides. Friends that have left, that are no longer here, saw a post I put on Back Forty, and
Thank you, ma'am.
Here in Fair Oaks, and what I'm surprised is by the language by the commercial property, specifically highlighted a specific sport for the horse. And unless somebody is absolutely against horses and knows about it, they wouldn't have known to put dressage specifically to highlight that. Now, some of our stables that we have here at Fair Oaks, I know of three, at least two that are commercials, that are wonderful, top-notch dressage facilities that you can't find anywhere. Almost, a lot of the boarding facilities in the hill country are closing down, and it looks to me that they are targeting, not only me as a property owner, but as our, as our stables. We should be promoting and making it easier to bring this kind of business into Fair Oaks, not make it harder and more expensive. Do we want our kids playing video games, or do we want them out riding and, and participating in sports? Horseback riding is the only sport where it's both male and female. There isn't another sport like it where they can compete all the way up to the Olympics against each other. I think we need to continue to promote that and save Fair Oaks.
And thank you, ma'am.
We are the Hutton family. We live on the corner of Silver Spur and Ralph Fair Road. We have nineteen acres. Our family has enjoyed Fair Oaks Ranch since nineteen seventy-six. We're probably the oldest family out here. When Fair Oaks was first formed, it was supposed to be no less than five acre plots. That quickly changed. When the city of Fair Oaks was formed, we were targeted for losing our, they wanted to take our wildlife exemption simply because it was a city. Now, we won the argument in court, and now here we are again, targeted for loss of our freedom to enjoy our ranch. We are a ranch, and you must see that we, and others like us, are protected from this loss. Your restrictions will do great harm to us, and we will fight to keep this freedom to enjoy our land as we have done for more than fifty years.
And thank you, ma'am. At last, I have Brianna Mally.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Brenna Mally, and me, my mom, and my brother moved to Meadow Creek Trail two years ago, after my mom went through the world's nastiest divorce. Everyone can relate at some point. The whole reason we bought our property is because it is a horse property. It was sold to us as a horse property. It has a twelve-star barn and an indoor riding arena that's completely covered, it's got enormous, beautiful, beautiful pastures. And that is the whole reason we bought this property. My mom invested her entire life savings and took the biggest risk of her life buying this property for me, so we could bring our horses home after the divorce, so we wouldn't have to sell them. And these proposed changes in Chapter Four of the UDC destroy more than three-quarters of our property. Our two biggest paddocks are at the front of our property, and our house sits at the back. If you take that away, you take away more than half of our land for our horses. We have to get rid of some of our horses. One of the horses on our property has lived at that property her whole life. We take care of her for the owners who owned the property before us, so she doesn't have to leave. My mom bought this land for me because I want to develop it, I want to, I want to breed horses, I want to sell horses. I have this whole big idea, when I inherit this ranch one day, that I keep the beauty of the land, and I let the livestock live on this. If you have these proposed changes, what are we doing to the property? You're selling it to developers who are going to take these chunks of property now and destroy it and make more subdivisions. Our property is wildlife exempt, we feed the birds, we feed the deer, we take pictures with our game camera. You think the developers are going to keep the wildlife exemptions too, when you, when we have to sell our land because we can't live here now because of our horses, because of these proposed changes? They're going to destroy that wildlife exemption then, all these birds, all these bees, all these deer, all their wildlife and home is gone too. These proposed changes, like, they really just restrict us as owners, and they're also restricting our wildlife, and they're restricting our youth. You know, I'm here on behalf of the kids who want to keep these ranches going, who want to keep this beautiful community, but these proposed changes make it so that we can't keep Fair Oaks Ranch a ranch anymore. It's just a subdivision. So I implore you to please think about, you know, not only right now, but the future. Do you want your kids living in a small subdivision where you're all crammed together, or do you want them on this beautiful ranch that they've worked their whole life for, and that it's a legacy? Because our property, that is my family's legacy, and I'm going to fight tooth and nail to keep that legacy for my mom.
Thank you, and very well spoken. That is, that is all the individuals that I had that signed up to speak as part of the public hearing. Is there anybody that I missed? Yes, sir. Of course you can. We're getting to that point.
My name is Robert Joyner. I, I just have a comment that hasn't been made yet. One of the things that a very wise person always taught me was, whenever you go someplace, read the room. Look and assess the room, read the room. I think you guys have done a very good job of that today. I don't think the lady back here did a very good job of reading the city. In addition to reading the room, you've got to read the city. With all the comments today, I hope that the consultant now can read the city. We're not Pearlland, we're not Houston, we're Fair Oaks Ranch. You know, I always thought that the definition, an expert witness in my field or a consultant can always pick them out, they wear three-piece suits, they carry a briefcase, they talk glibly, and they're from out of town. And, you know, we really need to refocus that, and I, I don't know if any of the Planning and Zoning Commission members are here. I don't know a one of them. I know that they're, they're volunteers, and I appreciate that, they're appointed by either this mayor or the prior mayor, I'm not sure which. But I hope they too can now learn how to read the room, if they're here, and if they're not here, they should listen to this, and read the city. When the consultant was talking, and she, and she said that they got some regulations and bylaws from other cities and looked at those, and she talked about making, you know, this a hill country. this a Hill Country city. We're not a Hill Country city. We're a horse city. We're, we're a rural city. You know, we need to look at the horse community, not the Hill Country community. We need to read the city. And everybody here has done a great job of defining that, and I hope that our consultant can learn how to read the city as well.
Thank you, sir. Was there any, come on up.
I, I did have a lot to say, but I knew that everyone here was going to cover most of that.
Do you mind stating your name?
Yes, sorry. Jamie Murray. I am a resident. Nole Hase. I have 12 acres. We were on Silver Spur before that. I've heard a few times, and I've been told since I learned about this, that this was unintentional, that our Planning and Zoning Committee is in fact made up of residents. So I guess the reason I do feel compelled to come up, even though I think everyone covered every topic, is I truly believe that there should be a formal request for their resignation. Because while you may be my neighbor, you will never be my friend, and you clearly have a personal agenda, and personal agendas cannot create policy. They have no right to be on the committee. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like, yes, ma'am?
My name is Terry Katz. I live in Burnie, but my horse resides in Fair Oaks at a beautiful facility. I moved here about eight years ago. I've worked at Strudy's Feed for seven years. A lot of you are my customers, and if this goes into play, a lot of my customers go away. I'm a divorced, single mom, so a lot of my livelihood goes away at that point as well. So not only is the, you know, the home, the homeowners that can't sell their properties as horse, as horse properties are losing money. Small, small businesses will be losing their money as well, because if I don't have horses to feed, then I don't have a lot to offer. So that's what I wanted to say on the small business side of things. And that's kind of all.
Okay.
So the P&amp;Z is all volunteers, and it was my understanding that, like, we don't actually have representation from the back 40. How do you become a volunteer to be on that? Or how do you get elected? Or like, where do you go to be able to have a voice in it?
Okay. Well, I'll answer the question real quick. We're not supposed to address, but you have asked a question. We're in the process right now of filling our boards, committees, and commissions. And so probably two months ago, we started advertising that we needed people to apply. And so this year, we had five people apply to fill five positions. So if you would like to apply, the opportunity is still there, and I would ask that you send a email or call our city secretary, and she handles all the applications. That's Christina back here. Thank you. Good question. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir?
Can I make one more?
Of course, Dr. Taylor.
I apologize. I just wanted to point out a couple things that, and hopefully a lot of this just gets scrapped and redone, but on the commercial boarding facility, there's a requirement that there's, the number of parking spaces is tied to the square footage of the barn. It's nonsensical. I mean, the, the horses use, use the edifice, right? The people boarding there don't, don't use the barn. So, so tying that to the size of the barn, it doesn't make sense to me. I, I hope it doesn't to y'all either. The other thing, the, the maximum of six horses is, is so arbitrary, it's insulting. My 45 acres, to tell me I can only have six horses, I, I don't get it. I don't know why that happened, but that, that's, that's in there, and hopefully that gets removed. The other thing about the commercial stable requiring six-foot fence all the way around, I've got a huge property. A six-foot fence around the whole thing is, there's no reason for it. I don't think anybody here with horses has a six-foot fence. What, Steve, well. If I needed it, I would, I would address it, but yeah. So I just needed to point out those things, that I hope the whole thing's getting scrapped and redone, but I just wanted to point those out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Did you want to speak? All right. So that, one last call. Anybody else that would like to make comments? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'll keep it short. I promise everybody. I know you guys probably want to get out of here. Okay, so my name is Leslie Abel. I am a resident of Fair Oaks. I do not have horse property. I would if there had been some available when my husband and I bought here six years ago, but there wasn't anything, so we bought on the golf course for him. But I do have a horse, and I board it at one of the commercial stables that is here in Fair Oaks. It is the most immaculately kept place I've ever been in my life besides the Taylors. I don't board at the Taylors, but their place is also very immaculate. I have never seen a place more well-kept, more thought out. Everything, I mean, it's, it's amazing just the care, the level of care that they take, not only for the animals themselves that live there, but also the property itself, making sure that the grass is always green and as much as they can, obviously. You know, throwing out seed in the winter and, and really trying to keep the look and feel of the ranch while also providing a wonderful place. I am so incredibly grateful to be able to have my horse so close to my home, who I would not be able to see very often if I didn't because I work so much. So it's just, it's really, really, one of those things, I hope you allow it to stay here, because it means a lot to a lot of us that are residents but don't have the ability to keep their horse on the golf course, because Fair Oaks Country Club probably would say no. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Bernadette Casey, and I'm the, the facility that she speaks of. And I would like to say that, number one, the Country Club was the original Ralph Fair House that has been expanded on to now be your Country Club. So they have a very, very significant input in this whole community since the 1930s, and we would not be here without Ralph Fair. So I think we are continuing on their destiny. Now, I want you to know that the majority of the horses at my barn are mine, because I'm a horse addict, right, Keith? I own every horse, all of my daughter's horses, and I keep them until they die. So that is why I bought the property in the first place, and I share with some friends. So that's what I, and I offer excellent quality care for my horses as I, you know, because they are part of my family.
Hi, I'm Janice Fair, and I'm so impressed with all of you. I am the daughter-in-law of Ralph Fair Senior and Dorothy. And, well, I guess I've lived out here longer than any of you. I own the River Rock Event Center. I don't know if any of you know where that is or have ever been there. In the last five years, I've had a lot of trouble with contesting the Saratoga Road into my event center, and it has been closed. And I'm really not in Fair Oaks. I mean, Fair Oaks surrounds my property, and the property, which is about 30 or 40 acres around me. Investors have come in to the people that own the, the property around me now, and were trying to force me to sign an agreement, which I did not sign, and I have not signed, and I will not sign. We have property around us that's open. We have beautiful deer access. I have no horses, but I love horses, and I grew up with horses out here. So I really didn't know what this was all about, and I'm so glad to be here, and I'm so impressed with all of you. And I agree with all of you. So I just wanted to thank you for being here, and thank you for trying to keep this community a ranch to begin with, because that was our purpose, to have open spaces, to have animals, to have deer, to have horses, to have 4H or FFA. And my grandchildren have certainly enjoyed that. Now they're grown, and my intention is, as long as I'm on the planet, I will be working to keep my event center and have it available to anybody that wants the beauty around it and wants, and wants to be there and enjoy the property and the center itself. So I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that we missed? Okay, with that, then we'll move on to if any council members have comments that they would like to make. Let Laura go first.
I was just going to say, Mayor, I have many comments I'd like to make, but I'll wait till the consideration item.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for coming. It's pretty impressive to see how many people have come out tonight. And I think your name was Brenna, Brianna. Thank you for coming. Your passion is absolutely amazing, and you will go far in life with that. So keep moving forward because you're extremely impressive. So most of my comments, are we going to echo what others have said here? My family, we moved out here for the rural fill of the ranch. We live in the back 40. Show of hands, how many of you live in the back 40? Just curious. So that's also why I'm, I moved out here. And while I understand that there was no ill intent of these regulations, I truly, truly believe that, I don't believe we got it right at all. And so I also would like to question, why are we making the changes? And does our special use permit not serve the purpose, et cetera? I don't know the answer to that. So that's something that I would like answered personally. And I don't believe that if there isn't a major reason for that, that we should change what we currently have, because it seemed to work, at least in my opinion. I'm pro-property rights, and I don't believe in restricting or removing any of the rights of our owners. So, thanks.
I have to echo everything that, that my compatriot here has said. I also live in the back 40, and a lot of you, know a lot of you sitting in the room have, have seen my miniature donkeys and my monster horses with the black wrought iron fence with the green gate, because it used to annoy somebody. Honestly. And, and that will always be a green gate, as far as I'm concerned. But the horses, particularly during COVID, how many people would drive by the house with their grandchildren, or the kids would come by on bikes with a bag of carrots? I finally had to reach an agreement that they, they'd lay off the granola bars for the, for the horse that was getting very fat. But it was, it was an outlet for people to be able to decompress and help be out. And it's something that I think really goes to the flavor of where we live. And I'm just amazed at watching all of you come out tonight. One, I don't think this room has ever had this many people in it. And two, to really go ahead and take part in this process and be heard. So thank you again for coming out and being part of this.
I just want to echo what everyone has said. I, I agree with everybody. I have specific issues that I'll bring up in the, in the consideration item, but I do want to say, I don't live on a horse property. I live in the fairways on the golf course. But I grew up in Dripping Springs. And if anybody knows where Dripping Springs is, I grew up there in the 80s, when it was hard, there were hardly any people there. There, the subdivisions had really huge lots. I grew up on six acres of land, surrounded by a beautiful creek. Our neighbors had, they literally started the Austin Zoo, so they had every animal. And that was just, that was part of, of what, where I came from. That's what led me to come to Fair Oaks Ranch. I, I went to law school in San Antonio, and when I was done, I wanted to move out here to have that kind of, kind of experience for my kids. And so I appreciate everybody coming out here. If you've seen Dripping Springs recently, you know, it is not what it used to be, and that is the last thing that I want to happen to where we are now. So I appreciate everybody coming out and spending their evening with us and sharing their comments. Thank you.
Keith, any, any comments? Okay.
Got to learn how to turn the mic on. Now, I do have, like Laura, I have some questions about the, the changes, and we'll do that in the consideration time. Thank you.
Okay. And any follow-up or anything? Okay, I have the, the time now is 8:12, and the public hearing is adjourned. Do I, yeah, hold on a second. We're about to do the.
We're about to vote on the topic.
Y'all want to? All right. So, hold on a second. Hey. Trying to finish this up. Yeah, the public hearing is adjourned, not the council meeting. Maybe that was the, the clarification. And so we as council could not discuss how we wanted to move forward with the item during the public hearing. So the follow-on is, we have a consideration item, and that is what we're going into now. Okay? And from this, we'll make a determination of how we want to move forward. Now, tonight, we do have five consideration items that we're going to discuss. The first one is the consideration, the possible action, approving the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Unified Development Code related to Chapters 4 Zoning Districts and Use and Regulations and Chapter 5 Subdivision Design and Standards. And with this, have a couple notes that I'll start off with, and trying to put some format to this, I guess. In the consideration of the two chapters that we have tonight, we basically have four options. One, we can approve as provided. That's what, option one. Number two, we can amend it, and then we could approve it. Number three, and all these have several variables to them, but in basics, number three, we could postpone this to some other time in the future, because we don't want to mess with it tonight. And the last option is that we could refer this back to the P&amp;Z Commission with specific guidance on the updates that we would, as part of this. So really, what I would like to do is open this up first to council to get your temperature on where it is that we would like to go with these options.
Mayor, I want to refer this back to P&amp;Z.
Second.
Three?
Okay. Let's hold on the motion a minute. So we have a direction. My recommendation tonight was also to move forward with the updates, sending them back to, the UDC, back to the P&amp;Z, with specific guidance from us on what we are looking for as part of a process and as part of updates. Honestly, from my position, I look at this, that there are some urgencies that we have looked at in getting the UDC approved and getting the changes processed. But I firmly believe, and listen, please don't confuse it, I firmly believe that it is more important to get this right than to rush through the process. And so that is why, from my standpoint, I look at this and agree, yes, we need to refer this back and get it right, and then we can bring it forward. So if in agreement, okay, so we have a direction, in returning these chapters back to the P&amp;Z, we need to provide them specific guidance. And so I'll start off with Table 4.2 of Chapter 4, which we've talked about, the commercial stables. And so with that, I agree with requiring a special use permit for our zoning districts to establish a commercial use stable in that area. Well, I'm just, we can discuss it. I'm providing. area. Well, I'm just, we can discuss it. I'm providing a, what I believe is, is that we need to relook the definition of what defines a commercial stable so that it eliminates or separates those that are family-owned properties that have nothing to do with commercial-owned stables. And Dr. Taylor brought it up, and John McKeon brought it up, and John McKeon even provided a possible out that would help us with the definition. If we don't want to do that, that's fine. The prior UDC, the 2019 version of the Unified Development Code, does provide a definition for what commercial stables are. That definition was altered and put into the recommendations. My recommendation, let's start with the definition that was originally in the UDC that has been approved, the 2019 version, and if they need to make modifications from that, then let's do so. After that, I would recommend that we delete all the specific requirements listed for commercial stables. There are too many individual areas that need to be considered to list specific requirements for commercial stables. I believe every situation will be unique, depending on the zoning district, the acreage of land, where the land is located, and what is available on the land. Providing specific requirements as part of the UDC would be too extensive to cover all aspects. We have identified a need for a special use permit, if that's where we go, and to establish a commercial stable boarding facility. The special use permit should be the process used to evaluate the requirements for individual requests, and therefore, these requests need not be listed as part of our Unified Development Code. So now I'll open it up for council for changes.
I have-
Yes, ma'am.
So, I don't even know where I can begin. So, one, I appreciate everybody coming out. I absolutely agree with everything that you said. When I received this copy of the Chapters Three, Four, and Five of the UDC, I was surprised and angry, and I still am. And I'll tell you why, because you should not be at a place where you guys have to be here tonight. It has never gotten to this point. And so, it frustrates me that the process got us here. And I'm not even willing to consider what was being submitted to me tonight because it's not the version that P and Z voted out of commission, out of their meeting. The words they voted out are not the words that were sent to us. They did not vote out anything with any of this horse wording in it. I am not going to willing to even look at it because it wasn't even voted out of the committee with the words that is sent to council. That's one. Two, this was brought to us in March, the entire UDC, with all of the changes. We spent two months giving direction to the P and Z because we thought there was way too many changes and it was way too much for any one person to comprehend all of those changes at one time. There wasn't a summary of what the changes were, why they wanted the changes made, none of that was there. I thought we gave very clear instructions that we voted out of council on how we wanted it to come back to us and be presented to the residents. I think Chapters One through Three followed that because topic one was, I want to see just the things we need to change to become, to keep up with the laws that have changed since we passed the UDC, and anything else that we have observed in its operation that did not work properly. And I saw that when Chapters One through Three came through, we just voted for that change right today. I do not see that in Chapters Four and Five. In Chapters Four and Five, I see a sprinkling of, we need to make these changes because the local government code changed. And then I see a sprinkling of entire policy changes that no one has ever come to the council to even ask if we wanted to consider doing it. So, I'm not even in the notion that we even were considering changing setbacks or lot sizes or horse restrictions. None of that was even brought to us as something we even wanted to consider making a change to. And I don't want to hold up changes we have to make for legal reasons, for concepts that none of us have even agreed we wanted to even take on. No one has even looked at the comprehensive plan. There's stuff that is in here, proposes lot sizes, changes, that are complete disagreement with our comprehensive plan. If you want to change a policy, let's change a comprehensive plan first and then change the UDC. But there are things that were proposed in here that don't even follow this. This is the policy that was passed by all of us. We had town hall after town hall to write what's in here. And so, this is why I'm upset. I'm not even willing to consider what is in front of me. I want to send it back to P and Z, but I want to see just the legal changes. I just don't believe council is in agreement that we even talked about making any other changes besides that. That's my thoughts, and so that's the direction I would give.
Being that we would revert back to the original 2019 and only provide legal changes as needed by Texas and federal law.
Yep. And anything else that they found doesn't operate properly through things that they've observed, like maybe that mixed-use percentage or something like that, because they physically observe something isn't working right in the UDC. I would be willing to consider those, but not policy changes that no one in the council has even been brought in to discuss.
Okay. Good recommendation.
I agree with that.
You want me to go down?
Any other, yes, ma'am?
I completely agree with Laura and everything that she said. I think our direction was, based on what I remember, is what we were trying to do is make this consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I don't, I mean, clearly didn't happen. And in fact, it went the opposite way. I went through all the changes, page by page by page, and I found myself writing the word "why" on every change. Why, 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 why? And I could go over every single page, but I kind of like Laura's idea of, let's take another stab at this, send it back, have the P and Z just look at the legal changes and maybe reference our comprehensive plan and see how to make it consistent with the comprehensive plan and state law, especially, I mean, we had one of our residents mention some of the recent changes to state law that we need to make sure that we're complying with. And so that would, I would agree with Laura. I think I would like to see that happen.
Yep. Keith?
Same thing with Emily, because when I went through it too and marked a bunch of pages, there was no logic given to these changes, the things that Laura mentioned, like setbacks and square footages and those things. So, it seems to me, if we don't have a problem, we shouldn't be changing things. And so if we've got a problem, we need to understand, I think the council needs to understand what the problems are so that we can give guidance to the P and Z as to how to address it. But at this point, I'm in favor of the same thing. We just, we revert it back and take out everything that's not required legally. And then have the P and Z, you know, identify to us things they find troubling and let us give them guidance into how they would draft some language for us to consider.
Go ahead.
If my mic is working, can y'all hear me? Yeah. I have a question, and I'm not sure you can tell me if it's appropriate to ask at this time, but I'm a little bit shocked by what Laura said because I would assume that they are voting on these changes and staff is making the corrections. Is there something that we need to talk or clarify or do there? Because I don't know the whole story behind what Laura's saying, so I don't know what really happened. So I'm just trying to make sure that-
So I'll just, from my understanding, there was a version, and Mayor, please correct me, the version that was voted out of P and Z was on a condition that somebody make a change to the horse section. And then someone made a change to the horse section and the P and Z didn't see it, and then it came to us.
Which should not happen.
Correct.
Okay.
Because that means nobody saw the changes to the horse section until it came to council. And I didn't even know we were changing that section.
Until it was posted online and everybody saw it.
And I'll be clear, you guys saw a copy of it online before I even got a copy. So I was getting emails from residents about words that I hadn't even seen yet.
Okay.
Same.
Who made the suggestion to stipulate it to get it to us?
I don't, I personally don't think, I don't know, without knowing the whole ins and outs, I don't really think, I mean-
I think if that's an elected position or-
It's an appointed position.
Then I think we should have the right to know who is suggesting that criteria. Who is attacking the horse?
Why aren't they here?
Yeah.
Or are they here?
No, they're not.
Where are they staying?
All right, hold on a second.
I don't think that's necessary.
No.
It's, we have identified that there, the procedure that we went through was not the best operation for providing the information to council. And it's our responsibility to review that information and ensure that we make good decisions for the future of our city. So we have identified that, yes, we could do this process better and we will identify those requirements so that we can. A lot of that, what Councilmember Kerner presented, is a lot of that process that needs to be put in place so that we can do and manage this properly into the future.
So we as a public have the right to know what are our limitations, our time to do, especially if it's a personal agenda?
And I, I guess I'm hesitant because I've not done a full investigation on this. And for me to release and say somebody's name specifically about what I know about may not be fully accurate. And I don't want to be a party of putting somebody's name out there with that.
It is highly detailed, specific against horses, specific against dressage, specific against race tracks. It's to eliminate the horse community and the boarding facilities in Fair Oaks, which are the top-notch in the Hill Country. They want to eliminate this for a personal reason. I don't see why you would want to do it for any other gain.
And I don't know that answer because I haven't talked to the individual about it.
Is the investigation going to be done, because that name can be used once you determine it was-
Well, yeah, okay, that's fair.
I mean, that's fair. If the investigation is going to be done to determine whether there was a mal-
Okay. All right, I owe that. I'll do that. We are sidestepping from the true issue of what we're here to address tonight, which is, hey, well, in essence-
We wouldn't be having this meeting if you wouldn't have the largest crowd if this wasn't particularly-
And I appreciate all that.
You know, I could be at my son's football game right now, but instead I am here not only to protect my horses at home, the horse I board, and my property value. So I would rather use my time a lot more wisely than have to because somebody has a personal agenda. I don't have time for this. I know everybody in this room doesn't have time for this. I know our horses are at home and hungry would like to be fed right now. So, we do require answers because it should never get too this specific. And quite frankly, you should stand behind your decision if you're going to be on a planning and zoning committee for a city. If you can't stand by your own choices and words, then why are you on that committee?
That's a good point. Yes.
So, I'd like to also echo what Laura said. She spoke it very well. So thank you for that. And my fellow colleagues, I also believe we should refer it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But as I said before, it's kind of like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And so if there wasn't a reason that we were given or that can be presented to us that the process was broken, I believe we should be sticking to fixing legal requirements and moving forward with those things in the UDC and then presenting changes as needed, but maybe having other people get together and give input, community members give input if we're changing something, and again, follow the comp plan.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Can I open it up for, if there's any other comments or questions from residents on this? Yes, sir.
I just have one suggestion.
Sir, would you mind?
Sure.
I apologize, but-
Okay. I'm not completely familiar with your formality and how y'all are dealing with this, but it seems to me that I've heard it a number of times from the front table that I didn't even see this until you guys already saw it. I think, I guess we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, so to speak, in this crowd by sending it to us, us reading it, thinking it's all your fault and you coming up here and saying, "I didn't even see it until after you did." Is there not a way that you guys can review this and say, "Okay, I'm kind of happy with this. Let's send it out to the people so they can see it and then they can come complain about it?" It seems a little backwards. Just my-
Just your good observation.
You said this in a body. Is there a six member on the committee because I would like that position?
Ma'am, I'd ask if y'all would like to speak, please use the microphone so that everybody could hear you. Is there anybody else that has comments or questions? Okay, then could I get a motion to move forward with this item?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor. I'd like to move to send back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, UDC Chapters Four and Five for rework, specifically to revert it back to its original version and just provide the changes required by law and/or recommendations driven specifically from things that are not working correctly.
Second.
Any other, any other comments, discussion from council? Okay. With the motion on the table from Laura and a second from Michelle, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. This will be returned. And that completes-
The first agenda item. The first agenda item.
Want to take a recess?
Yeah, we could.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Hey, sir. In case y'all- In case y'all. Thirty-four, and we're going into recess for five minutes. Christine, I have the time now is eight forty-two, and we are back in open session. Eight forty-two. Uh, with that, we'll move on to our second consideration item tonight, which was the consideration and action, possible action to approve the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four municipal development district budget. I'll hand it over to Mike Lovelace.
Hello, I'm Mike Lovelace. I'm the treasurer of MDD, and you'll be excited to know that we don't have anything to do with horses. Uh, tonight, our budget is, is in front of you. It's kind of on a straight line from prior years. And the big takeaway that's not on here, but, or you have to do some math to get to, is in the last three years, and so I'll, I'll go back three years, two years, and this current year, um, our ending fund balance has increased by three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred ninety-five, and four hundred and ninety thousand. That's approximately one point four million. That's the big takeaway. Do y'all have any questions?
I, I think the only thing we should probably note is that how we changed the committed budget under the fund balance for nine, for the, um, project, for one point two million dollars.
Yep, that's consistent with what you guys have already heard in previous meetings that previously we had committed, the MDD had, to underwriting a six hundred thousand dollar grant. And, uh, and at Scott's request and our vote, we've increased that to one point two million.
Cool.
So no questions?
That was my only question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions from anybody here tonight? Then can we get a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four MDD budget as presented?
So moved. Second.
From Michelle Inchesley. Any other comments from council? Motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the motion is approved and the budget is good.
Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, the next item is the consideration and possible action approving a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with JF Petroleum for construction installation of a fuel tank. And Clayton.
Sorry. Clayton Holsher, procurement manager for the finance department. So tonight's item is for the construction and installation of a fuel tank. So the city budgeted sixty-five thousand this fiscal year for the construction and installation of a fuel tank on the city campus. Really, the purpose of this project is to improve emergency preparedness and, uh, the real resiliency, if any sort of weather event should occur, anything like that. Basically, so we can refuel all our public safety vehicles, public works vehicles when needed. The project will consist of installing an above-ground tank. So that'll consist of installing a concrete pad and the safety ballards that go around it. A double-wall split compartment tank, so it'll have both gasoline and diesel. It'll be one tank with a split compartment. Fuel pumps, the, all the meters and hoses and nozzles that go along with it, some over, overfill prevention devices and spill containment features, and all the electrical components to fully install this as a turnkey job. So in order to support this, we advertised a request for proposals. Uh, we ended up getting three proposals that were received. We evaluated those based on the qualification and experience of the team, the project approach, and the price. So after we met the evaluation team, the city selected JF Petroleum Group as the highest-ranked respondent. The cost for them to complete this work is seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So this, this, this project will only consist of the installation of the tank and all the, the work that goes along with it. What we're going to be doing concurrently is, there's a lead time of about sixteen weeks for the tank. So in order to install the tank and everything, we're looking at around February of two thousand twenty-four. So we'll time it up and basically we'll be evaluating some fuel management systems that'll be able to monitor our usage, the department usage. It'll track everything, provide reports, and let us know who's, um, who's using what and how much it's costing. And also, at the same time, we'll issue a request for proposal here, here in the near future to hire vendors to provide fuel delivery for us. So this project doesn't consist of that. We'll be doing that separately. We, um, we initially, we, we had the option of, of vendors being able to do a turnkey job. But what we found out is that really it specialized in either you're doing the construction or you're doing the delivery. So we'll get, Phil, that we'll get some, some more options to, to review. The policy analysis and benefits are that it'll support the strategic action plan to implement a fuel station for the city fleet vehicles. Will improve our emergency preparedness and operation resiliency by ensuring access to the fueling station during any sort of extended power outage or winter storm or any sort of other calamity. And then we also meet our procurement guidelines by issuing a request for proposals for this. So as I mentioned earlier, that we budgeted sixty-five thousand this fiscal year for the project. So the cost for the project and a five percent contingency results in eighty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for the cost. We have savings available from other strategic action plan items to cover that difference of seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. The vendor, JF Petroleum Group, they have over thirty-five branches. They're a national firm. Uh, I think they've been in business for over seventy-five years, so we feel like they're really qualified. Firm that can do this for us, and they've done a lot of similar projects. What we are, we will be using our standard construction agreement, so no changes were made to the template that we typically use. So what we are recommend, recommending is to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with JF Petroleum Group for seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with a five percent contingency in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for a total value not to exceed eighty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. And with that, I'm happy to answer any sort of questions that you might have.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I have like three questions on this one.
Sure.
So were there not any vendors that were within the budget? Did y'all, was there any that came in under the budget?
No.
Okay. Um, and then, so you're saying this is not going to go online until two thousand twenty-four?
Correct.
Just a curiosity question. So are we going to incur, are we, is all the cost going to actually happen in two thousand twenty-three?
It'll happen in two thousand twenty-four when the, when the tank gets installed and, uh, they come and do all the electrical work and pour the pad and all of that.
Okay.
So it won't be paid in, in advance, like for ordering the equipment or anything like that. It'll be paid at the time of installation.
Okay. How do we do that when something straddles years and it was on last year's budget?
So, um, it, we, we carry forward projects that are completed from, from one year to the next, the budget appropriation. You do that through a year-end.
Do you do the whole cost or just part of the cost?
We do the, the whole cost or the unexpended portion.
Okay, cool.
If it's a project that's in process.
That's what I figured. Um, and then until you get, you talked about having to do the, the, um, that you're going to go for a bid later on about, um, finding tools that would track people's usage and stuff?
Yeah, so that one will be, um, that one will, will fall under, it's, it's a lower dollar threshold to, we've got different competitive requirements for under fifty thousand, and that, that fuel management system will fall well under that. And that will be able to look at different systems out there that'll integrate with the pumps. The pumps are pretty universal. They'll integrate with any, and the tanks will, they'll integrate with any sort of fuel management system. So we'll be basically vetting, making sure, um, they, they're a good fit for us. They provide the reporting capabilities we need, also that there's no sort of network vulnerabilities, anything like that. So that's, those are some of the things we'll be looking at.
But my actual question around that one, and that's great, thank you, is how are y'all going to keep track of it so that every person that's working at the city is not just going to fill up their personal tank? Like, how are y'all going to keep track of that until y'all get that in place?
Well, so currently, right now, we have a fuel management system that we use through Shell. But we'll have this in place at the time that the tank is operational.
Okay.
So we'll have it. So I would say within the next three to four weeks, probably advertise an RFP for the, uh, request for proposals for the fuel delivery. It should time up around that, that same time. So we'll, we'll do it all concurrently to make sure it's fully operational by the time the vendors test it and make sure that it's operational for us.
Thank you.
Keith?
Is the tank cost included in here? I didn't.
Yes, the tank cost is included in here. Um, so it includes the purchase for the material and all of the labor that goes with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Mm-hmm, yeah, it'll be. How big is the tank? It is a thousand gallons for gas and five hundred for diesel. So.
That was part of my question is how long will that actually last us in the event of an emergency? Do we have any idea of that?
Pulling up our typical fuel usage, we, I'm trying to think, on average, I think whenever we. Yeah, we, we, when, we did some research before we solicited this, and we average about twenty-three and a half thousand gallons annually of fuel that we use. So the majority of it is going to be gasoline. Um, that's why we have a larger tank for the gas. And then we'll just have to be prepared. Whoever that we contract with for a fuel delivery, that'll be one of the things that we're looking at is preference for getting fuel delivered in any sort of event like, like that. So that's going to be one of the factors that we're weighing. How quickly can they get us more fuel? And if we have something that we know that might, might be a potential, you know, extended outage, making sure we're all full and things like that.
And just to answer the question, that should last us, I think, filling up the vehicles two or three times in the event of an emergency. So when it's full with a thousand gallons, we're pretty well off. I mean, most of the vehicles here take about twenty gallons, no more than thirty to fill up. So it'll fill up the PD, fill up all our vehicles. We'll still have access to our Shell card. So even if we had to run up the Shell in the event of an emergency to fill up, we'd have that available.
I remember in the weather event, though, Shell was closed, right?
Yes. So, well, usually whenever there's a storm, our rule of thumb is anytime one else is coming in, go fill up your vehicles, get them ready. So if we had to, we could always run up the Shell until we get ours delivered, just to make our tank last a little longer. Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
So that, that was my next question. This will be on a generator so that it'll work in the event of an emergency, which is why we got it.
Correct.
And over time, do we see a cost savings with this by buying fuel wholesale versus?
So what we discovered is really the, the biggest benefit is not necessarily the cost savings. There may be some cost savings. Um, what vendors will often, um, offer is a discount from what they call the terminal rack price or the wholesale price, basically. But the biggest benefit is going to be being able to have access to it. So we might see some savings, but I wouldn't anticipate that being the biggest benefit of this project.
Okay. Anybody else? Then would some like to make the motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with JF Petroleum Group for $78,250 with a 5% contingency and the amount of $3,912.50 for a total value not to exceed $82,162.50.
I'll make it. Second.
Scott with the motion, and Keith with the second. Any other discussion from council? With the motion on favor, with a motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thanks, Clayton.
Thanks.
The next consideration item that we have up tonight is the consideration and possible action approving the first reading of an ordinance, amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Fee Schedule. This is Article A8 subdivision land development regulation fees. And I'll turn it over to Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Grant Watsonabi, the Director of Public Works for the city. Attached to this agenda item, there were two exhibits. The first exhibit was a copy of the draft ordinance for consideration, and the other exhibit, Exhibit B, was a comparison of our current and proposed fees. If you remember back on August 3rd, we did have a workshop to review the potential proposed updates to these fees, just to ensure that the fees cover the cost of providing that service. In a lot of cases, our UDC does require the submission of applications or permits, but there was no associated fee with it. And in other cases where we do charge a fee, that fee was inadequate to cover the, the amount of staff labor time as well as the legal and consultant review costs. As part of that workshop, we also shared how our proposed fees compare to some of the other nearby cities, just to make sure that what we're proposing is in the realm of reasonableness. Also at that workshop, council provided feedback that no fee should be reduced to ensure that our proposed fees cover the cost of service. And for the most part, we complied with that. I must note for you that while reviewing the draft ordinance this morning, I did find one, one item where it was reduced, and I'll point that out to you. If you could flip to Exhibit A, which is our draft ordinance. Line item I with the strike through, that's for development plats. The current fee was $600 plus $50 an acre. And then below that, in the underscore, line item J, it was going to be replaced with item J, which was development plat, and it shows $500 there. The intent was to maintain that current fee, and I think during the editing, it got, the $500 got copied over for some reason. But the intent here is to maintain the development plat fee at $600 plus $50 per acre.
That's the change from what we see in our packet?
Yes. But other than that, all of the proposed fees you see in front of you are the same ones that we reviewed during the workshop. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I can't find it in here, in this table, but where is the special use permit the guy was referring to when he spoke?
Item C, right here.
Item C. Thank you. So someone kind of elaborate on what that gentleman was saying to make sure.
It's going from 600.
Okay, so it's going, it's currently at 600. That's what I was looking for. I was looking for it in that table. Hold on. So am I to read that correctly, that even currently for, their fees are 600? Explain to me how that, that, what the gentleman was saying. I'm trying to put two and two together, and I'm not, I'm not. Can you help me? Or were you even in the room?
No, I was not in the lobby. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
So, Michelle, so if he wants to apply for a special use permit, and he's got 40 acres, he has to pay, based on this, it would be $800 set fee, and then he has to pay $50 per acre for his special use permit, which would be 40 times 50, which would be 2,000 plus the 800.
No, he had eight acres.
Eight? Okay.
Well, someone had 40.
It was Taylor had 40 acres. He was the one that explained it. But, but in that case, that's how it would, it would work out.
But, Michelle, also, isn't this, the special use is when we use it for commercial? So if he, it.
So if we're not, okay, okay, I'm following.
Well, so the issue he brought up, which I think is a valid point, is if he wants to board a horse for a week and charge somebody.
We took that out. That wasn't in the current UDC wording. Right, that's what we just ordered them to take out. I just wanted to make sure I was straight in my head on, on that. But I get you now. All right.
Okay, so, so my question is then what?
He doesn't have, with the current UDC, he doesn't have to apply for that special use permit, right? I don't know if he was, it was because it was boarding. I think he was doing something else. Was, okay.
He's doing the same thing as Dr. Taylor.
Got it.
He has a special use permit now.
Got it.
Dr. Taylor does.
So even under the current UDC, you need a special use permit?
Right. If you're going to, that's what I thought. Okay, so, right, for commercially, but a commercial use could be, he, he just has, he has his own residential land that he uses his horses for fun because he likes horses, but he has somebody that says, hey, can I, can I board my horse with you for a week? I have nowhere else to go. Everybody's full. And he says, okay, sure. He's going to have to come and spend $2,000 or whatever it is to get a special use permit for this one-time thing. Do we have a way to where we can set up waivers for specific instances like that where it's not going to be something long-term? I mean, that's my question, because I don't want to burden somebody from the ability to do that.
Because a special use permit is like, in my mind, it's somebody that wants to, I don't know, hold an event that sells alcohol at the park, or I'm, I'm coming up with some wild, you know what I mean? So I'm just trying to make sure we're not.
So if I could, I guess maybe add something, sir?
Go ahead.
So special use permits are permanent. Like, Dr. Taylor has his special use permit years ago, and it's permanent until he eventually sells and moves out. There's also a temporary use permit, which is a lot cheaper, and it's only $100, and it's for a specific timeframe.
Okay.
So if they want an exception to our permitted use table, they can apply for a temporary use permit, even though it's technically not permitted according to, was it Chapter Four? For a temporary short time period, they could apply for it at, for $100.
We might ought to consider that when they, when the PZ takes this thing back, that, you know, for an occasional whatever, there wouldn't necessarily need to be a permit for that.
I'm just trying to make sure that the guy's not going to be hit with a steep bill.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So one, Table 4.2, that was listed as part of Chapter Four, has the table, and it lists the areas where permits are required, special use or temporary permits that are available. It's getting a little bit off the topic of what we're doing here, but in reference to Emily's question, really, I believe the intent of updating the definition was to define it in a way that it was truly a commercial stable and that we are defining out those property owners that are just doing favors or recouping costs for other residents. That's, I believe that's where we want to get to. Okay.
And, and if there is just a temporary one, I do, I do see where Grant's saying it would only be $100. That's it. So if there is a special situation, we have that covered.
And all, all that's really happening here is we're just going up $200. That's it, from 600 to 800. So it's a, a small change.
That's to take into account the additional reviews and processes we have to do internally?
Right, special use permits do require council approval, and there may be additional plans or supporting documents that staff will have to review as part of that submission.
Works for me. And then, Grant, I highlighted all the tree preservation portion of this. I believe that's all new that's been added?
That is correct. That's all new.
Okay, and that's AH, AI, and AJ.
Can I ask a question on that here? On something like that, where we've got new fees, do we have the ability to modify that, negotiate something different if, if there's a request? Do we have a process to do that? Or is it just flat when we have a fee schedule like this? So if a developer comes in, and this would be a lot of money, and then they offered something different, do we have the ability to modify our fee? Or are we locked into this?
I'm not sure. I'll deter, defer to Scott and Dan.
And so the idea would be that your fees are your fees. I mean, that's, that's the purpose of it. So absent some type of additional agreement, whether it's a development agreement or something through the MDD or something like that, that would be the avenue for specific negotiations regarding a particular development. Otherwise, we have to charge our, our stated fees to all people regardless, equally, so.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think, Greg, what you were saying is AH, AI, and AJ is new. And so that's essentially allowing developers to pay a fee vice planting a different tree if they cut trees? Is that what this is? Okay.
And was there some reference that we utilized for determining the values that?
Yes, we looked at some of the other fee in lieu of that are charged by other cities, specifically Burnie. And we picked some things in line. It's not as much as what Burnie charges, I believe, but it's something close. And it's definitely more than what San Antonio would charge.
I'm all supportive of putting measures in place to ensure that we protect the, the oak trees. And I think it's been raised as a concern from, from residents that we need to protect them, so it does provide a measure.
I think the one I, interesting to me, I'm not saying interesting bad, but interesting good, is the tree removal without an approved plan. So that would be if a developer, was it, would this only apply to developers or would it also apply to residents?
Be developers.
Developers, okay. So a developer goes in and removes a tree without even a plan approval, then we could charge this $200 per circumference inch, which we weren't able to do before?
Correct.
Okay.
So in that, what you just said, so if they have a tree plan that the planning and zoning approves, then that's, that's what takes precedence, right? Okay. So if they don't do something, then this, 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 I'm confused there a bit.
No, this would still apply.
This still applies.
What they're saying is, so if the policy says you, if for every tree you cut down, you have to plant two or three trees, and they come back and say, we don't want to do that, we want to cut the tree and just pay a fee. That's what this applies. But then the other one is, is say, they didn't ask and they just cut trees down regardless of plan, and then you get to charge them a fee.
Okay, so if they, if they comply with our other tree policy, then these fees, you know, if they're not complying, okay, I'm with you. Thank you.
Yeah, the common situation is if they already have an approved tree plan and they, they're out there and they cut more than what was approved, then they may have to pay a fee for removal that was not part of the plan.
Okay.
In interest, I believe, help me out, that if we collect this fee, the, the money that we receive from it can only be used for tree programs. Is that?
That's something we're trying to verify right now.
Okay.
So generally, we had that, Scott and I had that conversation before the meeting started, and, and my answer would be at this point, and I'm going to look at it further, I've already have, have an associate looking into it, is, is yes. And, and I base that on, there, there's, I have not seen case law specific to tree mitigation. There's, there are case law and opinions out there regarding parkland dedication and fees in lieu of parkland. And in those instances, it's been consistently held that that money is set aside for parkland because that's why you're paying the fee in lieu of actually building parks. So I want to, I want to verify that it's the same with trees, but I also want to verify that it doesn't preclude us, for example, from using those funds to establish an oak wilt remediation program for citizens can access to get financial assistance for dealing with oak wilt and stuffs. Because to me, that would meet the spirit and intent, but I want to make sure that that would still fall within a, a legal use of those funds as well. But I, I don't have a, I don't have 100% answer for you now. It's my belief that yes, it has to be used for tree plantings. Every city where I have a tree, a fee in lieu of, those funds are set aside for the planting of trees in public spaces, so.
Any other questions? Any questions from anybody here tonight? Okay. They can get a motion to approve an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article A8 subdivision land development regulation fees.
So moved.
Emily?
Second.
Keith? Any other comments from council?
I, I had a couple of things on this one that I wanted to bring up during the, like, the discussion portion, sorry. And it was also on that, that tree section. We had, we had Botanica obviously come and talk to us a long time about this. And while I'm obviously pro-trees and for all of that, do we as a council, as the group of us, think there should be, as he's put, and again, not the 40% and all that stuff, but something where they can alleviate it? I guess what really got me, and, you know, it's hard to, to know if they were just picking random trees, and it's not all this way, but, you know, some of the ones they showed were mesquites growing straight into the ground. They are definitely not dead or diseased trees. That was obvious. But we're going to make them for the circumference, pay an exorbitant amount of money for a tree that is growing into the ground and practically useless. So I just wanted to ask my fellow council members if, if that's something that we want to at this point or consider, or if we just want to move forward with, with this, or some sort of, I guess, thought process on that.
So in this, my understanding, this was directly related to oak trees. Is that, is that not a fair statement?
That is correct.
It's a standard.
Yeah.
So there are exemptions to the UDC when it comes to trees. So mesquite, cedar, under a certain, certain circumference are exempted that are a lot larger. It's 48 inches, so a mesquite tree that's under 48 inches is exempted. Ash juniper, cedar trees exempted under 48 inches. Dead or diseased trees are also exempted. So it's not specific to oak trees. It's all trees over the nine inches and above that are outside of those exemptions.
I would even say, though, you know, we have, I mean, at my house, I have an oak tree that's yay big, and it's under a heritage oak, which is yay big. And it literally grows straight sideways. So there's nothing, it's not doing anything, I guess, but, you know, if that's a $30,000 tree, should it really be a $30,000 tree? That, that's my question to all of you. Or if we should consider this and think about it as we're, as we're starting out, because I felt like they made some good points. Again, I am pro-trees, all the beautiful trees I want to save, but I, I just think that if we're going to put this into effect, we need to think things through and really look at it, so.
Well, we also offer the mitigation option, too. So, I mean, they can, they can choose to, am I right? They can choose to pay fines for some, mitigate others.
To clarify, they, they can't choose. It's up to the city manager to allow them to pay a fee in lieu of.
Okay.
The, the UDC requires them to replant. That's the first primary option. If they can't replant, then they can replant at the approval of the city manager at other city property somewhere else, or pay a fee in lieu of.
Gotcha.
But the intent is for, to have them replant on their property.
Okay. That's better.
So under that example that Chesley mentioned, a tree growing sideways, is that exempted already in the, in the plan? Because if we just had the exemptions correct, maybe that would be how we solve that?
So the exemptions come from the UDC. I think it's Chapter Eight.
It's Chapter Eight.
Which is environmental protection, so. We haven't gotten there yet, but we will one day. Again, dead or diseased trees are exempted from mitigation, so they can be removed without having to replant or pay a fee in lieu for dead or diseased trees.
But that's not dead or diseased.
It's not dead or diseased. We haven't gotten to Chapter Eight yet.
Expand that list of exemptions. We can do that, I think, as part of Chapter Nine.
Maybe that's how we solve it when we get there?
I think we can. I think we can, I think we can.
As long as we can solve those kinds of issues with UDC, I'm perfectly happy with that. I just wanted to bring it up here and think this through as we're doing, you know, have to do, I think we have to do it twice and all that mess. as we're doing, you know, have to do, I think we have to do it twice and all that mess.
I think we can make direction to the P and Z or, you know, whenever they're going over that chapter, that we may need to consider some other exemptions.
Okay. So I would just also, you know, if we get to that point in the UDC. Well, I'm sorry. When we get to that point in the UDC, we can come back and change this. I mean, if we need to, if we start, we start looking at that, we're like, let's reopen the fees if that's what we want to do. I mean, we can make changes on the fly if we need to.
Anybody else? Okay, we do have a motion on the table. Any other comments from council? All in favor of approval of the motion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, did we want to fix the development plat cost? Or are we going to leave it as is? Just leave it as is?
Do you think we leave it as is? As you stated, right? The 600 instead of the 500?
Right.
Oh, right.
Yeah, there was a typo.
Right.
Fix the typo.
We could take a motion with that and change in there, right?
I thought we already annotated it.
Yeah.
The change.
Okay.
And so as you laid it out, what is included as part of the motion was that the development plat would be $600 and $50 per acre?
Per acre.
Okay. Good question. Any other comments from council? And with a motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The fee schedule is approved. Thanks, Grant.
Yes, sir.
And the last consideration item that we have on the agenda tonight is a consideration and possible action approving resolution authorizing the execution of a work authorization with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant Phase One Expansion Project.
All right. So going back to April of '23 this past year, we completed the wastewater treatment expansion study with Garver. And what we decided to do was expand our existing plant and also pursue a multi-phase approach. The first phase, as we discussed back then, would include an upgrade to our affluent pump station and the conveyance system between the wastewater treatment plant and the affluent storage ponds on the golf course. It would also include upgrades to our bottom of the hill lift station, where much of our influence comes into the plant. And it would also include, well, not, excuse me, not as part of the study, but as part of the follow-up town hall, some of the input we got from the neighbors around the wastewater treatment plant, where they'd like to see some additional odor control and specifically around the headworks where our bar screen is located. Those are the three primary improvements that are planned as part of Phase One. We've looked over our list of on-call consultants in the water and wastewater category. We ended up selecting Kim Lee Horn as the highest and best qualified for this project. I'll note that since the city is moving in a different direction from what was originally identified in the master plan, which was to build a new plant, we did not want to select a consultant that was part of the drafting and development of that master plan. So we looked deliberately elsewhere and we ended up selecting Kim Lee Horn, not only for that, but because they have also helped us with some other high-visibly projects, like the elevated storage tank. They understand the need for public outreach and how important that can be to the success of a project. And in this case, if we're going to be upgrading the conveyance system between the wastewater treatment plant and the golf course, that's going to pass through many, the backyards of many properties. So public outreach might be a big part of this project. Last month, city staff and the general engineering consultant completed scope and fee negotiations for the first half of the engineering services in the amount of $183,908. This includes basic services of project management and 30% design. And it also includes some supplementary services that may include environmental compliance review to include permitting, an archaeological survey, additional general engineering and public outreach for another $48,777. Again, the total negotiated here is $183,908. Following completion of negotiations, like our GEC did provide a recommendation that are to accept the consultant's proposal as fair and reasonable. That is included in this agenda item as Exhibit One. And a draft, a copy of the draft work authorization and a copy of the consultant's proposal is also included as Exhibits Two and Two A. Earlier, I mentioned this represents about half of the engineering costs associated with the Phase One expansion. Upon completion of this work, staff does intend to negotiate a follow-on proposal with Kim Lee Horn for the 100% design as well as bid in construction phase services. And that will be brought back to council for consideration in the future. Lastly, the city did budget $929,711 for this project. This amount is adequate to cover the cost of this work authorization as well as the follow-on future work authorization. And as far as timeline goes, staff, once this is, if this is approved and awarded, staff does plan to work with Kim Lee Horn over the next year to complete the entire design for this project by fall of 2024. And I think that's it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
She had one quick question for you, Grant. So with the $929 and the amount of total project cost for the year, and then the 183 that we're looking at, from your view, is all that within the budget of what we projected when we went through this and we estimated cost for Phase One?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions from anybody here tonight? Think I get a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of a work authorization with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for engineering services, which would be 30% design in support of the wastewater treatment plant Phase One Expansion Project at a cost of $183,908.
I move.
Keith?
A second.
And Laura? Any other comments from council? And with a motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is approved.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Grant. Thanks for both. And that completes the consideration items that we had on the agenda for tonight. We do have three workshop items to go through. First is a review of the 2023-2024 Budget Workshop. And we do have a presentation associated with this. That presentation is on page 406 of the Agenda Packet.
Good evening, council. Summer Fleming, Interim Director of Finance. So I'll just give a brief update on the budget and the next steps in the process. The current version of the proposed budget, it was filed with the city secretary on August 21st. It's published on the city website. And then we've printed copies for each of you as well. And similar to the last workshop, many of the numbers have not changed. So I won't go over details on every slide. But starting with the general fund, there was only one change since the last meeting, and that was to add $150,000 for the fire station number three upgrades. So the new amount being transferred to the Strategic Projects Fund is $813,526. And in total, the general fund has a deficit of $558,521 that would be coming from reserves. Now, these reserves are from unallocated surpluses from prior years, and they're funding one-time capital purchases and strategic projects, so not ongoing operational expenditures. Here are the projected fund balances at the end of fiscal year 2024. We are adding to the operating reserve to maintain six months' operating expense in accordance with city policy. And there is projected to be a little over $495,000 unallocated surplus remaining. For the Strategic Projects Fund, here's just a recap of the capital projects in the proposed budget.
Hold on one second, Summer.
Sure.
So Mayor Pro Tim Kerner here, because the mayor has stepped out. Just want to make sure for the record, you have Councilwoman Menchell left at 9:26. Okay, thank you. Continue.
Okay. So we have the continuation of two Dietz Elkhorn projects. We have the start of two new drainage projects from the approved CIP, and then the added fire station number three upgrades. In the utility fund, there were no changes from the last meeting. The utility proposed budget shows an operating income of $1.13 million. Of that, about $624,000 is in the water utility and $510,000 is in the wastewater utility. This budget does reflect the change in wastewater rates and structure that council approved, and those are effective October 1. Here's the projected net position of the utility at the end of fiscal year 2024. You'll notice the balances reserved for the water and wastewater capital projects. We have the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, the Debt Service Reserve, which is equal to the annual bond payment, and then the Utility Operating Reserve. And then this just shows of the water and wastewater capital reserves, what is allocated to projects and what is unallocated at the end of the fiscal year. So that concludes the presentation. There's no action required tonight. This was just an update on the proposed budget. As you know, next Tuesday, September 12th, we'll be conducting the public hearing as advertised. That will be followed by the first reading of an ordinance adopting the FY 2023-24 budget, and then the first reading of an ordinance levying the 2023 tax rate. And then on September 21st will be the final adoption of the budget and tax rate with the second reading of both ordinances. Are there any questions?
The changes that were made does not affect what the tax rate will be.
That's right. Yes, the $150,000 for the fire station upgrades, that came out of the unallocated surplus. So it did not change the tax rate.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from anybody here tonight on the budget?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Summer. Second workshop that we have tonight is a Water Conservation Plan Workshop.
Mayor? If I may, if you're okay, we'd like to proceed with the Civic Center Workshop first because we have a consultant.
Oh, I didn't know he was still here.
He is still here, sorry. Yeah, but we'd like to make sure he can get in and get out. So I appreciate that.
Okay. So we'll move to the Civic Center Workshop. There is a presentation associated with this one also. It's on page 441 of the Agenda Packet.
Long evening for you. I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Hey, sir, as we're going through this tonight, and I've been through the slides and looked at them, what is it that you are looking for from us to move forward with the project?
Okay. Basically, the last time we met, what we needed from you is provide information as to the use of the building. We gave you the uses that we had been given through the RFQ and had discussed in our initial meeting with staff. There was very few adjustments to that list, and you gave us the opportunity then to meet with the stakeholders, which is what we did. We met with the group of stakeholders that's in that presentation. And each one of them had different requests for the space, for the event space. So we, you know, we listened, took lots of notes, also reviewed the adjacencies that you've seen in, in that presentation. Everyone was in agreement that the building worked really well. The other thing that we reviewed with you initially was also the site selection, which you had approved. So all of that was, is part of this presentation along with some of the comments that we received from the stakeholders. So what we need from you all is approval that what you've seen in, in the presentation before you is, is to your liking, to your approval, so we can move forward with schematic design. We can't start the process, the schematic design process, which is the initial phase of your project, without getting your approval, obviously, to move forward.
Okay.
It's that simple.
Question, Greg?
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't recall, but I think we had talked about, I know we had initially talked about one office space, and at some point, we had talked about having two office spaces. And I just don't remember what we landed on. Because in this, on page 447, it looks like there's only one office space.
What we, what we recall is there was, initially it said offices, and then there was some clarification from that presentation that what you really just needed was one office. Somebody brought up the thought that, well, maybe we'll need another office. But then the idea of having a conference room that can be shared, but mostly during council meetings, a way to kind of have a breakout space. And someone had suggested, well, to keep the building under the 5,000 square feet, maybe that's a space that can be utilized for an office also. That's what I recall.
I recall the same thing. That that conference room could later become an office if needed. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
I feel like we're diving right in here, so I'm just going to go. Is the conference room also, and I'm really, I'm kind of confused on the flow based off those diagrams. I think this other one is a little bit better.
The next slide, I think, might be a little.
Think he's going to go through a build of what the requirements were and then how they got to the recommended design.
Okay, I'll wait till you're done, and then I'll ask my questions.
Okay. This is, this is kind of as close to a floor plan as you're going to get before going into, you know, an actual schematic design phase. But what we tried to do is, it's a very simple building. It's a large event space with a few support spaces around it. So most of it is just making sure that things are where they really need to be in support of the main space, which is the event space. We think the site that has been selected for this building is perfect. It really lends itself really nicely, having a facility that has a very strong axis through north to south and allows multiple entrances. That doesn't mean that you will use both entrances all the time. But the building lends itself really nice to have entrance from the north and entrance from the south when it's in full use. And then the support spaces are where they, they need to be in relationship to the, to the event space. The dais is centered with the event space, which is wider in the kind of an X direction, which is what you would want for a space, as opposed to being deeper. So it works really well. The support spaces around it work really well. You've got your conference room that's right next to it. All of those functions are at the part of the building that has the, what we consider to be the not-so-great views. The great views are towards the south and towards the east, where you have the trees. And, and so it's very well situated on that site with, with those two entrances. So as far as the adjacencies in the building, it's pretty straightforward.
The total square footage you're proposing is 4930.
Just under 5,000.
Okay.
And that's very flexible in the sense that all of the spaces surrounding the event space, I believe, are probably the right size. But the event space could be, you know, slightly larger or slightly smaller and still work for you. But I think the way those functional spaces fit and the adjacencies are, are working really well.
Any questions?
Looking at the stakeholder summary, Mayor, I find that really interesting. I mean, I, it's, glad that we did that because there's some requirements elections that I didn't realize. I didn't realize, and so then.
So the, all of them were very simple requests, and the type of requests that you would expect from different stakeholders, all of them were very doable. The main one was the, the use of that building for elections. That was the tough one, because during election period, that facility required a large enough space to house the election functions, but it had to been, it had to be locked up overnight. So it was open all day during whatever hours were set, but then at the end of the day, that entire section had to be locked up. And so what was decided is that if the election period fell in account, during the calendar, where there was going to be, you know, council meeting in that space planned, then that meeting would occur here instead.
All that.
Because there was no, to keep the building under 5,000 square feet, it would have really required us to, to provide them with a space similar, not, not that size, but maybe two-thirds of it for just them, that would only be used twice a year. And it just didn't make any sense. So the thought was, what if we just inconvenience, the council maybe once, if it happened, it's hard to know exactly when, you know, how you're voting and your days are gonna occur, at least for us, we weren't sure. But there may be once or twice a year where that facility has to be locked down, and it would require this meeting to occur here again, so.
So we're possibly talking about two meetings a year?
Yeah.
Possibly.
Yes.
Okay.
That was the only sticking point. The rest of it was really simple.
I find it interesting in the stakeholder summary, I've never seen 175 people come to an HOA meeting, so I just thought that was very interesting.
I've never seen that many come to a city council meeting until tonight.
Right, exactly. So I don't know what HOA.
Well, the annual HOA meeting, we used to have about 175, 200 people. We'd rent out, like, the River Rock Event Center. So, yeah, for the annual meeting, I have seen that many. Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID. Go ahead, Michelle.
I have a question, and I wrote Greg a note in the beginning part of this meeting. I see you're adding some new parking. But, you know, I didn't look outside in the parking lot today, but I'm real curious to see if we were able to even accommodate the people that were in this room tonight with parking spots. Because I don't think you're adding, are you really adding? Because it looks like you're gonna re, have to reconfigure some of the existing parking.
It's hard to explain what would happen for parking, because right now, really, what you're seeing is just some loose thoughts at this planning stage. The next phase, during the schematic design phase, we will get a survey of your property and identify, have some better ideas of how to reorganize the parking around the building without, you know, having to, you know, having any negative effect on your trees. And then there's area in your property where I think there was a couple of buildings that were removed, maybe portable buildings. We've been told that there's an area on site that could be used also for additional parking. So until we really study it, but that won't happen till.
But that will be something y'all will look at later down the road.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Michelle, to your question, to give you an idea, as the meeting was about to start, we did have people that were already parking in the school parking lot. But I would, I don't know if anybody else went out and looked at it, but I would estimate 80%, 75% of the people that were here were able to park on the city campus here. From what I saw right at 6:30, so. Did that help?
Yep, thank you.
So I, just a budgeting question. If the, 4930 square feet at $425 a square foot is over $2 million, that's, I think that's a lot higher than what we were anticipating. Am I right?
I'm not sure that, we have an estimated cost per square foot, so.
Well, it says it on page 446.
Yeah, we were asked what we thought the cost per square foot for a building like this would be, and without having any real design, those are the numbers that we're seeing now, so.
So at the high end of that, 425, that's about 2.1 million, so a little over 2, yes. So.
From my memory, Emily, we didn't know what to estimate, but we knew it would be at least 1.2 million, which is why we updated the number with the MDD with that amount, hoping that when this is done, we'll have a better estimate, and at that point, you could determine if you want to ask the MDD for more, or if we're just gonna, as a city, pay for that additional amount. But I, I remember us having that conversation, because we just didn't know.
At this point, I think utilizing a $425 per square foot number is just a safe bet. We all, we, meaning everyone in my industry, keeps hoping, I mean, I've had clients that have, not this year, but last year, put projects on hold. So we keep hold, hoping that, you know, just around the corner, things are gonna even out a little bit, and, you know, construction costs are gonna come down a little bit, but we still haven't seen them. We've seen them tap out, but we haven't seen construction costs come down yet. And honestly, maybe they won't, but I think at this point, we really should be on the safe side, thinking it's gonna be like $425 a square foot. Now, you know, the quality of the building, the type of building, our job is to do whatever we can to make sure that your project, no matter what, is gonna be an aesthetic success. But at the same time, the aesthetics has to be filtered in through what we call is your budget, so. And all those things kind of get flushed out in the next several phases, but we have to kind of start with the schematic design phase and see how the building shapes up, and, and then look at materials, the type of construction. We, with staff, we've talked even about maybe using a stick frame building as opposed to conventional construction, commercial construction that's more, you know, steel frame, because with size, it might allow us to do something that, maybe there's, like, a lot of large houses have a little bit of steel in it to allow for the big, open spaces without columns. This facility obviously would probably need some steel, but a lot of those functional areas that are around the main space can be stick framed. So there's a lot of ways to design this building to be very cost-effective, and at the same time, make sure we have enough money to, to put some, you know, stone veneer and, you know, make it look like it fits on this campus, and keep it very vernacular to what you already have, so.
Just for comparison, how big do we think this room is, just from our visual, roughly? Square footage?
About 1,200 square feet.
About 1,200, so this would be about double, this 2,700 would be about double the size.
The main event space would be a little bit more than double this.
Just for my references, looking through this, and Emily, you bring up a good point about, you know, it's square footage and the cost related to it, but in the design that they provided, it seems pretty streamlined, that they found a way to, I mean, in the big pieces, to fit this all together and meet the requirements that we asked. You know, if we're gonna go forward with it, my thoughts are, is that we ought to go forward with something that really meets the requirements.
Sure, no, I just, I wanted to point that out, just because we had talked about the whole.
And so the, the one concern I have is when I was looking at where we're putting the, the daisies. And so it, it seems to me, the way we've, we've put it in here in the middle, and then it would have walls on the side of it, right, is that something we're looking, is it more angled out? Does it provide an opportunity wherever you're sitting that you'll be able to see the entire room?
That's a, that's a very good point, because right now, what we're looking at is a diagram, and it's a kind of a diagrammatical plan of showing where functions are. So as we turn this into a floor plan, those are the type of things that we'll start looking, because, you know, right now, obviously, you're looking at a bunch of rectangles, but you're, you're absolutely correct. You know, those side walls would probably be splayed, so you have, you know, a better view.
Okay.
Just, we like the layout and the adjacencies, but all of that would be massaged into a floor plan, so it'll be more realistic. But I, I think that's an excellent point, because when I look at that, if I'm sitting behind the desk where you are, I would, I would be asking the same thing. How am I gonna see the guy that's sitting on the other side if I'm in the back? So, yeah, we would have to work through that.
And that, and I was, I was, we had some discussion about it, had to be ramped, and there had to be room for maneuverability behind the daisies.
There's, there's a lot, a lot of things that have to go into the design, yes.
Okay. And then the, we talked about audiovisual AV equipment that's gotta go in here, and as part of this, we'd look at, I don't know if you have to have a closet or somewhere where you store all this, would it, are we looking probably in the storage?
We'll have an IT room, and, yeah.
All in the storage room, because we don't have anything really designed for it.
Some of the minor spaces, of course, are left out of this diagram, just showing the big blocks of functions, but that, that'll all be part of your floor plan, yes.
Okay.
And I would hope that, to that question, that that stuff's kind of permanently installed, that you don't have to move it around, right? Yeah, yeah.
And just because, to your point a minute ago, just because we have the dais drawn there, doesn't mean that's where it ends up.
Yeah, we think that's a good spot for it, but the, the big functional areas seem to be in the, I mean, there's not that many, this is a very, you know, simple layout, but they seem to be in the areas where they would work the best. You want the dais to be in the center, you want the large, open space to be wider from the dais, so you're not looking out into a long space, you're looking into a wide space. So now, whether we put, you know, the warming kitchen on one side, or the, you know, the conference, conference room on the other side, we like that side for the conference room only because it allows, allows it to have lots of windows, but, but then it takes it away from the corridor, that, that main spline, so all those things have to really be worked out in the floor plan. There may need to be, you know, just some rearrangements, but that's a.
Having the kitchen by the parking lot, because right, the parking lot's on the other side, you can drop off food and stuff.
That was our main thing, because we had moved it around in a couple of spots, we had quite a few of these, and I thought having it directly facing the north, and so people can come in, drop off casseroles and things. This is a warming kitchen, you throw it in the, in the oven and keep it warm, and so deliveries, maybe cups and things like that, then, you know, paper goods and.
The walk across the entire event hall to drop off food.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Always be that guy, though.
Oh, yeah.
The wrong door.
So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of real positive things about the layout, but that's not to say that things might not, you know, move, move around a little bit. We, as soon as we get started on this, we'll obviously be working very closely with your staff, and, and, you know, this will be reviewed, you know, sent through to review for you, for y'all to look at. But what we need tonight is just a basic approval of, I like where we are, I like the direction we're heading, we just need to start, so.
Me.
My comment is, I don't like the cost, but I know that that's only gonna get worse. So the longer we drag our feet, the more we're gonna have to spend. I like the, I like the layout, I like where it is, I like everything else about it, so I don't have any problem going forward.
Good comment, thanks. All right?
I like it.
Thank you. Any other questions or?
Any questions from anybody here tonight, related to it? Okay, got what you need?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate all of you.
Hey, sir, thank you for, for sticking around, and.
No problem.
I hope it was worth the wait.
Want to buy a horse? Wait and get the approval we needed.
Okay.
Good luck to y'all.
Thanks.
Guess he got to see the use of the space.
Yeah, that was, Keith brought up, I was gonna say, one other comment is, Keith brought up, while we were all sitting here, people looking for a place to sit, like, wouldn't it be nice if we had?
He's gonna add kids.
Well, we need pooper scoopers, too, so.
All right, the last workshop we have tonight is water conservation plan.
Yes, good evening, council. So Julio and I are here to talk about the water conservation plan. This is a workshop. The main purpose of this is to talk about a possible update to the watering schedule, but we wanted to also provide a brief overview of the water conservation plan as a whole, because if we decide to move forward with a possible update, it's better to update, we might as well get all the updates out in one go.
Hey, Kelsey, do you mind if I say a couple things real quick? And if I step out of line, just let me know. So two things that we're really looking at tonight, one was the watering schedule that we talked about, is it something that we want to adjust? And so that's one of the, the feedback items that we're looking at as part of tonight. We can talk about timing later, my recommendation would be is that we wait until we get through maybe the severe drought portion that we're in right now, but we can talk about that. But the ultimate is, is it something that we want to pursue relooking the watering days?
Correct.
The second piece of this is related to watering, is our process for enforcement of sticking to the watering days.
Yes.
And so I think we're gonna talk about that process also. So this is a workshop, this is feedback to Kelsey to let her know, kind of.
Julio, too.
And Julio, but to let them know our thoughts on it and where we want to go in those two areas.
Correct.
Okay?
Is it working?
Okay, got it. So just to do a brief overview, water conservation plan has many parts to it, a lot of it is, is items from TCQ that are supposed to be part of the plan. So a few of those items are water conservation goals. Based on Texas Water Development Board, utilities have to have water conservation, water reduction goals for the future. So we, so through the water conservation plan, we have a five-year and a 10-year water reduction goal, and this is through, by gallons per capita per day. So gallons per capita per day, individuals who use a certain amount of water per day. So it establishes a five and 10-year goal as well as an overall go, goal that we're supposed to hit by 2070. So we provided what those goals currently are in our plan. Historical average is 188, five-year goal is to do 180, 175, and 10, and then by 2070, the ultimate goal is to have a reduction to 140. In addition, landscape design and installation, so this establishes the permit process for irrigation for new lawns and redevelopment and, and renovation as well, so it also requires drought, drought-tolerant grasses and sods and stuff like that. Water, landscape watering management, this is where we'll have most of our discussion, because this is what establishes our watering times and watering days. So we'll talk about that more later. Additional to that is prohibition of water waste. So this prohibits certain activities that are deemed water wasters, and so these are items like purposely allowing water runoff onto the street, failing to repair controllable leak, and using non-recycling decorative fountains, stuff to that effect. Doesn't want to work for me. Okay. So moving to landscape watering management, section 1306006, this section establishes our landscape watering hours, which everyone. Uh, this, uh, section establishes our landscape watering hours, which everyone should know this, midnight to 10 a.m., 8 p.m. to midnight. As well as establishing watering days, uh, which is the last digit of your service address. This also, through this section, it also establishes, uh, or prohibits landscape watering on the weekends and allows, uh, watering by hand-hold hose, drip irrigation and by a five-gallon bucket at any time or day, uh, outside of watering days, watering hours, stuff like that. Lastly, uh, this also establishes the landscape watering permit process. And so what the landscape permit process is, is that if you have a new, uh, if a resident, a utility customer has a, a new lawn, they are able to apply for this permit. And if granted, they are able to water that lawn more than once a week as long as, but they have to still abide by watering hours. Uh, this only goes into effect outside of drought stages. So since we're in stage two, these, we don't issue any more permits at this time.
Can I ask a question? It's workshop, right? Okay, good. So these watering hours, days, all this stuff, this applies to residents who are on our water utility.
Correct.
So if I have a well, this doesn't apply. Like, I could...
Correct.
Water whatever I want to.
Water conservation plan and water, uh, not water conservation plan, the watering hours and the drought contingency plan apply to our wa, uh, Fair Oaks Ranch utility customers. So the customers only.
And from what I understand, I think we selected, our landscape watering days match those of Saws. Because, uh, for the most part, because half, some of our residents are on Saws. So they have different watering days set by Saws.
Yes, and that, that's one of the challenges we'll, we'll discuss a little bit is we have four different utility, water utilities here in Fair Oaks Ranch. But watering hour, not watering hours, excuse me, watering days, how that is set up. Mirrors, uh, Saws, uh, Bernie, most, most utility customer or companies use the same watering schedule. Uh, except watering hours, uh...
A little bit off.
Have, vary based on, uh, utility.
Who enforces water conservation of residents on Saws?
So, so that's, that's, uh, we'll talk, we'll just, yeah.
Can of worms, sorry. Let's continue and then we can get back to that. Put a pin in that one and we'll come back. Okay.
I have a kind of a random question. Growing up, we had a rain, a giant tank that we collected rainwater in. Um, and we used that to water lawns and things like that. Is there any kind of incentive or could we come up with some kind of incentive for residents to do some, you know, if, if they're, if they want to have a rainwater collection system? And give them some kind of rebate or some, you know, just something to incentivize them to do something like that if they can?
So that is something that we briefly looked into. It's something that we can continue looking into as well. With that comes funding, uh, or a donation from some, from some entity. So in the past, Trinity Glen Rose Groundwater Conservation District, uh, which is the groundwater conservation district we're in, uh, hosted a rainwater barrel workshop or class. And with that, you, you paid a, a resident could pay $40 to take the class. At the end, they were able to take home a barrel. So, uh, we can continue looking into something like that. And that could be, it, that could be included in our water, in our, um, water conservation plan. Or it could be something that we can implement without it having to be part of an ordinance as well.
A lot of, I know a lot of residents have, have it confused from just look, watching social media. And that, that program that you just mentioned has often been attributed to our water utility and us providing the training and the water barrels. So that's out there. I, I know I've seen it several times recently.
Yeah, we, we hosted it, I believe, uh, I believe it, it was hosted here. However, it was a Trinity Glen Rose in coordination with, I, I have the flyer somewhere. But it was, it was ho, it was their event that was hosted here.
Wasn't a city event?
Yes. Any other questions before I move on?
Okay, one more tangent, sorry. Is there, have we ever considered, and this is, uh, because I've been by the dog pound in Bernie and I, I see where there's a, a stanchion where you can get by their gray water, I guess. Their treated water for, for use. And I think it's mostly for construction companies that need to, non-potable water. Is that, is that ever been considered for us? Because our only customer, as, as I recall, our only customer for our, our treated water is the golf course, right? I, I mean, I, I'd load up a trailer with a 250-gallon tank and go get water just to keep my trees alive.
You're correct. We do go ahead and, uh, our permit requires us to go ahead and give it to the golf course. And taking that we can barely give them enough to irrigate with, I probably wouldn't recommend us going down that route of trying to go ahead and, and, uh, provide non-potable water to construction companies in the area. But it is an option. If that's something we wanted to go, we could with. However, I probably wouldn't recommend it just because the country club already struggles.
I'm never going to go against what the expert says, okay? But, but when you're shaking your head that hard, uh, no, I'm with you. Okay. Done, sorry.
Okay, so next we'll talk about just a few challenges that we faced or we have seen thus far. Starting with code compliance. So code compliance's goal or responsibility is, um, one second. Uh, their main purpose or goal is to educate the public on our water conservation plan, but also, uh, which includes, uh, landscape management. So, uh, residents or utility customers adhering to their watering schedule. They, he does this, or, uh, he does this through educational notices and, uh, which are water conservation handouts, uh, when he sees a customer watering on the incorrect day or during the incorrect times. Uh, starting in 20, in this past August, he does, uh, the code compliance officer now works flexible hours. So they are able to cover occasional weekends where they weren't be able to before to help, uh, continue with the educational outreach and, and ensuring, uh, customers are adhering to their watering days and watering hours. Current process is based on educational outreach. And so this is basically, I, I wanted to outline what the, what the process is right now, which would be, uh, when a non-compliant, when non-compliance is found, the code compliance officer will provide two educational notices first. So they'll do, provide it once. If it's seen again at the same customer's ad, service address, another educational notice will be provided. After that will be a warning. And then what we're looking for is guidance on what's the next step after an issued warning, which would be the possibility of a filed affidavit with our municipal court.
Kelsey, I have a question. Do, so does, um, the, does the code compliance officer for those education, are these the, uh, folks that he's observed? Or is it if a neighbor calls in, um, what, what's the protocol there?
So it has to be observed by the code compliance officer. There are, we, they do get, he does get a lot of calls or notices, uh, where residents see their neighbor or someone else watering at the incorrect time or incorrect date. They'll notify him and then he will go out and investigate. And, um, with his eyes, he, he, he needs to see that there's been an active non-compliance.
Okay.
I have a quick question too. We got one of his friendly notices the other day. We were, um, watering on the day that we thought was our day. It turned out not to be our day, but we've been watering that day for eight years and didn't know it was wrong. So, anyway, um, now we're on the correct day, so we're all good. A quick question on just like what the city has done in the past. Have we ever offered, like, I know, for instance, we had someone come out that we paid to walk around our yard and go, okay, this sprinkler head that's over here and watering this very drought, drought tolerant plant, you could cap that off. You probably don't need it. So like, we actually saw a decrease in our water bill when we did that. Is there, has there ever been a plan or a thought of doing that periodically where we would have someone from? And I don't know, we might not have the staff, so that might be the answer. But a program where we do it occasionally where you would free of charge, go to a resident's house and kind of look at their sprinkler system and maybe off, offer up suggestions for water conservation?
Uh, so like an irrigation consultant, I, that's popular with Saws. Uh, we...
We're too small?
Are you, yeah, we don't, we don't have the staff for that. And, and we don't necessarily have an irrigation, someone who's qualified as an irrigator or plumber on, on staff to necessarily be able to provide that at this time.
Have we ever pushed out any information on, or do we want to, on benefits of drip irrigation versus the other, like, the amounts, you know, save more water by dripping than spraying it all over creation?
Like educational outreach when it comes to, like, proper protocols for irrigation, drip irrigation, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, maybe, maybe even like suggestions for what's a, what's a good place to do drip versus this because it saves more water and, you know, just anything you get to do to make people... Because there, a lot of people here, they're not going to stop watering. But if we can get them to water smarter, um, and then turn their sprinklers off when, you know, right now the grass is pretty much dead. Or dormant, yeah, dormant. Hopefully the grass is tan colored and not gray colored at this point in time. But, you know, I still see people watering, I mean, it rained four inches and then they're watering the next morning. So I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know how to solve that, but...
Yeah, our, our communications team does push out, um, water conservation practices. But we can definitely look in at doing something more geared toward irrigation, uh, proper protocols, items to that effect, definitely.
Michelle, I'd say that with the example that you brought up, with the resident that was watering on the wrong day, I mean, this was, I wasn't pointing fingers, but, uh...
Didn't mean to.
Honestly, it's, it's what we want as part of our program. And Robert was able to go out and notify you. And so that was a success. We got you back on the right day and it's what, it's what we're trying to accomplish.
The funny thing is, though, is my day is not, my right day is the third highest day. So really, I was probably doing you a favor by watering on the wrong day. But, and the whole reason I put this on the agenda was because of that situation where we had that Monday.
I think we're getting to that point. The other piece that I think what Kelsey's leading into is that, uh, what you laid out is, Robert identifies a residence. He does an educational visit. Uh, he sees them again at a later time. He does another educational visit. And then he sees them again on a third time and now he provides a warning.
Correct.
And so it's what, what's the next step?
Correct. That, that's what we're seeking guidance for. So educational notices are provided in person or posted on the customer's door. Warning of violation is posted in person or on the customer's door in addition to it being mailed to that, to that residence. And so I, we just wanted to provide what, how many notices have gone out in the past year to kind of show you where we are in the process and why we're seeking guidance for what the next step is. So over the last year, 79 educational, first educational notices went out. Of the 79, 13 received a second notice. Of the 13, one, uh, one warning has been issued. And so currently, no citations or affidavits have been filed. And so we're, we're seeking guidance on if this is the correct process that you would like us to continue going down. And if the next step in y'all would be to file that affidavit. Since, since two, three notices have been sent to the resident, would the next step be to find, to file the affidavit?
So on the, the, the first, I mean, a lot of people don't use their front doors. Like, because they come in through the garage and, I, I mean, I know a lot of neighbors who never go through their front door. So some of these first notices you post on the door may never have, they could go and get blown away and never have been seen. So like, what classifies an actual notification? You know what I mean? Does that, do we really consider that notifying them? Because if they didn't receive it... And, and the only reason I'm saying this, because I remember when I was campaigning and leaving flyers, I would go back two or three weeks later, my flyer's still stuck in someone's door. So that's also, I guess people don't use their front doors. But, so you're not really notifying them.
Maybe you should mail it and post it, you know?
So, but we mail the written warning, we mail the written warning, right?
Correct. Yeah, so the educational, the fir, the first two educational notices, uh, are in person or, or posted on the door. Our code compliance officer talks to a lot of residents. So a lot of them are, I, I don't know the, I can get that number on exactly how many were handed versus posted, uh, because that is data that we do have. I, I don't have it with me, but I can always provide that. But after that, then the warning is posted in person or mailed, uh, before there's a...
Or...
I, in addition to.
Okay. I mean, I just would think at least two actual communications with them would suffice before we went to some other action. That's kind of my opinion on it.
So I did check with our code compliance officer today to get a little bit more data. And of the educational notices, we have never where somebody got a warning. We have never heard that they did not get their educated, they didn't use that as an excuse.
Okay.
So we're going to assume that they received it. This is just an internal policy. If you wish for us to post it and mail, or if you wish for us to mail, please let us know.
I'm not, I'm not saying that necessarily. I'm just, I'm glad you provided that data. Thank you for that. Um, I just want to make sure that people are getting the communication at least twice.
We're hoping.
So...
And when they got the warning, they didn't complain. They didn't say they weren't warned. Um, so we're assuming, yeah. But it's a good point. Thanks.
Back on. Um, our ordinance now allows us to do a citation, correct?
It's a violation of the ordinance, correct?
Right. So, why aren't we doing that? I mean, I mean, we just never got to that point? Or you just, we just want to make sure that's what we want to do? Because if we're already allowed to do it, what more do you need from us?
Compliance cannot write tickets. That is a police function. That is a law enforcement.
Okay.
We, um, went with the code compliance process to try to educate. Our goal was to educate, educate. So instead of involving the police department, we do have the option to file an affidavit in municipal court, where the code compliance officer is the one that's going to file that affidavit because he saw the violation. They will receive a notice from the court, um, to appear in court and address this affidavit. Our, our process over the years, it has always been to try to handle it through code compliance court rather than involving the law enforcement place. Walk, driving up, issuing a ticket.
I get it. I just don't like passing ordinances that are never enforced.
Correct.
Right? Because there's, what's, why even have it?
Yeah.
Right?
In this case, I'm not sure that, well, we do have an ordinance. I think that was your point.
Right.
So we can enforce that, that it's, it's available to us now. I think part of this, we haven't done it in the past, but we're getting to a point that...
As of today, we have two redundant violators. They should have received the warning at least three times now. They, 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 I'm sorry, not the warning, an affidavit or citation. Because we have some, there's two, there's only two residents, which is not bad, but there are two, that continue to violate.
Yes, sir. It seems like it's working, though. I mean, right here, I mean, your numbers, if, if this is an annual amount, you've got one written warning out of all this.
Correct. So it is, it is working from the, um, education process. But what we're hearing from some residents is, okay, they're still doing it. What are you doing about it?
So he's not catching them again, is the...
No, or the person who has had two warnings now, it's continued to violate. And so some residents are calling in or customers saying, at what point are you going to advance to the next step?
But, but he has to, he has to observe it, right? He, he would have to observe it. So that may be the problem, right? He can't always get there to see them every time, possibly.
But he also knows the habituals and he quite frequently drives by that.
Okay.
Because there's a pattern. There's a behavior pattern.
And so far, we've been kind of spot checking that too, as we've been ramping this up. So really, the code compliance officer, I think, has been on, on two weekends, non-consecutive weekends. So we've been piloting this, if you will. So if it became more frequent, I suspect we'd see a few more.
And, and I just wanted to mention, I know in the past, we have surcharges. So councils or many people thought the surcharge is a fine. That, that was always brought up, so that's why we never really advanced it that way. And I'm sorry, um, council member Stroop, you've had your hand up a couple of times.
That's okay. I mean, my comment is to directly address, do we do an affidavit and how do we do that? I think we should, like Laura said, we... I think we should, like Laura said, we, you know, if, there's got to be a consequence, you know, if I keep telling my son not to eat the cookies from the cookie jar, but I don't do anything about it, he's going to keep eating the cookies from the cookie jar, so you've got to have a consequence. So, I think we do need to do the affidavit, however, when you're dealing with a court and you're dealing with, you know, a situation like this, I do think that we need to have har- hard evidence that this, that they had the notice, and they had these other warnings that, that are consistent with our policy, and not just, we stuck it in the door, and because they didn't complain about it, that means they got it. They could come into the court and say, I never got it.
Correct.
Um, so I do think we need to be able to say, we had personal contact with this person at least three times. Um, you know, the education, the second education, the warning, you know, and if the warning needs to go out, uh, either hand delivered or with some sort of return receipt or something like that, just so we know that they got all, you know, all of these things. I do think we need to make sure that we just can go into the courtroom and say, this is all, all the times.
Sorry, what we do have is that we take pictures of the violation, the time, day, stamp, we take a picture of the item posted. Many residents do not open their doors, they know why we're knocking. They have a rink, they see code compliance, city of Fair Oaks, they don't answer their door. So, it may be difficult to get them in person three times, but we could try at least once.
You could send it, but my point is, you can send it through the mail and, and send it certified, so that you know it's delivered.
Correct.
You know, and, and go that route, too.
Yes, yes, we do do that. We, we, when we send them a notice in the mail, it is certified.
Okay.
And we hope the green card comes back.
But that's at the warning stage, you know, maybe we need to do the, the second educational notice, if you did one of the educational notices and that you didn't actually give it to them, I think, I agree with Michelle, it needs to be more than just one solid-
So, are we going to set a precedent, Emily? I'm sorry, just, I mean, what's the difference between this ordinance and any other ordinance? And what if we don't do all of these things for every other ordinance, can anyone else violating any other ordinance say, you can't file this against me because you didn't give me three educational notices and a warning beforehand? I mean, that's my concern.
The only reason I brought this up is because if this is our policy, th- and this is the policy we're following for this ordinance, then, you know, that's what we should abide by, if there's a policy for a different ordinance, we should abide by that policy.
But, I'm just going back to the, everything we had to do to get the leases signed for the wells, okay? And, uh, how, what a nightmare that was, and I, I think that if you have visual, she's laughing. So, so if you have, you have pictures with date and timestamps, and you send notices via mail that are, uh, you know, certified mail, whether or not we get them signed or not, you know, you do it three or four times, uh, issue the citation and, and be done with it. That's my opinion.
But I'm okay with that, I'm okay, if you want to send it certified and show that it was delivered, that's, that counts.
Yeah. I think, but I think-
Yes, we do that, yes.
I guess to answer to, to develop with your question, is this written in a policy that we approved as council?
No.
Okay.
It was a process internally.
That you just do?
Yes. And I believe many-
As a service, if you will.
Correct, and I believe many years ago, it did not go the law enforcement route, when we asked for code compliance, this was what we wanted to use for this.
I, I think our policy along has been education.
Yes.
And that's, you know, it's educate, 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 and trying to get people to abide by, uh, the requirements of the ordinance that we have. And so I think it, it's gotten to a point now that, that we've introduced the warning as part of that process, just to put some emphasis behind it. Um, some of the comments are, is, you know, I, I believe Robert makes a legitimate effort to knock on doors, speak to people, and my guess is that that information is getting out there, and my thoughts are, is, you know, it would be great if everybody could just follow the rules. And then we won't have to worry about this, right? But we have people out there that, uh, that aren't as concerned about following the rules, and so when we look at it, an affidavit filed to appear before court, before court, it's not even a, uh, it's not even a ticket.
Correct.
It's a requirement to appear before court, present your information to the judge, and the judge at that time would make the determination, if there was a violation of the ordinance, and if a fine would be appropriate, is that-
Correct.
Okay?
Can you have a fine schedule for it?
Yes, yes.
Well, it's a-
Don't know what it is.
No more than, no more than amount, I don't know what it is, but-
For water, is it five hundred or a thousand? Five hundred for water.
I really, I really don't want to, but I feel like I have to, so, there's, there's other ways to do this, I mean, this is how it's being done now, but you can, it doesn't have to be criminal. It can be administrative, it could be a civil penalty, it, it, it could be decriminalized completely, um, I've, I've have other cities, and I've been city attorney in places where that's how it was handled, so there wasn't this criminal context to being a, a water violator. They, I, I was telling, uh, Scott, they took away the, the most effective tool that there ever was for water violators, and that was, in Abilene, we used to publish every week, the fifty highest water users who were, and, and then the mayor showed up on the list in the top three, uh, because we were in water restrictions year round, and so that was very effective, but the other thing we did was, we used a completely civil process, an administrative hearing, it didn't go to municipal court, it didn't go to a judge, it went to a hearing officer. And, but there was, you know, there, there might have been one warning, but after that, no, you were in the, you were in the program, you were going to go through the civil, civil penalty process, and if you were, were a good, a good soldier from there on, if you didn't have anything else, then you never had to pay that, but, but it was a compliance from the beginning, uh, because how severe the drought was up there, we didn't have any option. And other cities follow something similar to that, so there's other models out there that you can explore as well, um, this seems somewhat, it just depends on what your end goal is, I mean, if you want to see more citations, right citations in the beginning, put them on probation, and if they don't, if they don't have any more violations, you dismiss it entirely, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to do it.
But that's, I mean, that's kind of a pain in the, I, I don't necessarily want to go that route, my, my opinion, but bottom line is, water is, as we see, is not an endless resource, neither is electricity, apparently, lately, so we're getting to that point where something's got to be done, and people need to take it more seriously, I, I don't, just, I kind of like some of those ideas you were throwing out, and maybe that's, maybe we think about some of that, I don't know, I just-
Well, Danny, what's the end goal? Well, the end goal is to get everybody abide by the, the water restrictions that we currently have.
The end goal is to save water.
Save water, yes.
Well, right, and so it's within our conservation.
So, um-
So, maybe there are other opportunities, or maybe it's things that we should look at?
And I think council member Roden was absolutely correct, I mean, the data does show that the, the education is working, and, and like I said, we only really have two people out of how many customers, that's pretty low. So, however, you guys want to give us guidance, we'll take it.
Does our ordinance right now allow us to do just a civil penalty versus criminal?
Okay, so enforcement and penalty for the wa- the, um, water conservation plan is any person who violates the critical stage provisions of this plan is guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction shall be punished by a fine per violation provided in section one oh one, and I don't have that, yeah.
So, no, it's just a criminal violation right now?
That's, that's what it sounds like, yeah, so you would, so that would have to be amended, and then, but we've done that elsewhere, I've got civil processes in play, I mean, it's not a hard thing to transition to, and I think some people, that's important for some folks, when, when the goal is truly compliance and, and conservation, having it not be, and we talked about this, and I forget what, which one of your other ordinances, we talked about transitioning to civil penalties, and I think it was one of your, was it the oak, was it the tree, so I don't even want to bring up trees, but-
Was it deer feeding? Let's bring up everything that's controversial.
That we did, that we converted to a, a civil process, so, I mean, it's, it's doable, for sure.
I know that there's so, there's folks that are habitual violators, and they get surcharged, and they just don't care, and they just pay the surcharge. And if we, if we convert this to where they just have to pay another fine, and not have to do anything that takes them out of their comfort zone, they're just going to do it, they're just going to keep paying it, they're just going to pay, and keep getting citations, and keep paying, and it's, we're not going for those, and I know there might only be one or two right now, but who knows, in the future, there might be five hundred, you don't know, and so what is it that's going to really deter them from doing that? Having to take time out of their day to come and appear before a judge and explain to them why they're habitual violators of this um, ordinance, or just paying more money like they've been doing already?
Like Dan's idea, we post their address on the, online. That would work, but, hey, if you don't put their names out there, is it that illegal?
What's the point of next door if we can't do that?
Kind of is way ahead, so we have a, we have a criminal process, I think what we're offering is that maybe we need to look at some type of civil process that we could develop, take a look at, and is it something that we want to change to as part of this? Is that fair?
I would not be in favor of that.
Is it possible to kind of have both, and say that, you know, primarily you do civil, but after so many fines, it would become a criminal? Okay, I think that might be worth it, because at some point, like you're saying, some people will be like, I'm just going to pay, I don't care, I'll just, and for us, we're like, we really need you to pay attention, right?
Oh, so it varies by the stage of drought, not necessarily by the amount of- Oh, interesting. So, right now, it'd probably be criminal.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding code compliance?
Thank you for putting this together.
No problem. All right, so moving on to another challenge, uh, other utility customers, uh, so a- as we've previously touched on a little bit, uh, Fair Oaks Ranch city limits are composed of four utilities, which is Fair Oaks Ranch Utilities, Saws, Enchanted Oaks Water Utility, and Private Wells. So, currently, staff can only enforce what is written in our drought contingency plan onto our water utility customers, which make up about seventy-seven percent of our residents here, twenty percent are Saws utility customers, they, they make up, it's, I, it's about eight hundred residents or so. And so, since they are part of Saws Utility, they shall abide by Saws Utility, uh, Saws rules, regulations, restrictions when it comes to, uh, water conservation, uh, drought contingency. And so, the issue is that, with that, is that we, we can't enforce our rules onto them, and however, Saws also cannot enforce their rules onto them because of jurisdictional issues, since they are San Antonio water system, and it goes through their municipal court, that is a San Antonio ordinance that does not, is not enforceable in our city limits. And so that is a challenge that we're facing, uh, Saws can issue warnings, send out email addresses on high usage, however, citations or affidavits for those customers cannot be issued within our city limits. And so that is something that, um, can be challenging, since only, since it's a gray area of, uh, enforceability within our city limits.
How big a problem is this?
How big of a problem is it?
Yeah, I mean, we have numbers for, for the, for our utility, insofar as numbers of violations and such. Is this a problem that, that we're seeing where Saws customers are, can we identify that?
We do not identify that, like, write it, like, document that, however, if you drive through any of those neighborhoods, you definitely can see that occurring. I'm sure Saws may have some data on that, if they're able to track water consumption and usage and violations in that way, but currently, we don't have, staff doesn't have, um, specific data on violations for Saws customers. Yes.
Dan, is there a way that we can get around the jurisdictional issues? Can we grant some kind of waiver or something?
Uh, so I think we can enforce our ordinances in our city, I, I don't think it matters. I mean, they, they have to abide by whatever's stricter, so if our, if our drought contingency plan is more strict in our city limits, we can absolutely enforce it, I, I don't, they, they don't get to play by different rules if they're going to live in our city, regardless of who their provider is, and we can talk about it outside of the meeting, so.
Okay.
I mean, the, so there's, there's two elements here, so talking about a drought contingency, and when I'll come water, and when I can't water, is different than if we have, we've adopt, as a home municipality, we have an ordinance on the books that specifies those things, regardless of who your provider is, the stricter regulations are going to control on that, so, because San Antonio is not going to come here, they're, they're not going to come here and prosecute anything. They can only address that through their water utility, they can't address that as a criminal matter. So, I, I, I mean, I think we have jurisdiction.
Okay. Well, moving on then.
Lose the slide?
I was waiting for the well thing. Don't leave, Shane, come back.
All right, so this is, uh, our current watering day schedule, everyone should be very familiar with it, um, Mondays, zero and one, Tuesdays are, uh, service address is Indian zero and one, Tuesdays are two and three, four and five, and so forth, so on and so forth, with the exclusion of Saturday, Sunday, which is where there's no service addresses that water at that time. And now I'm going to hand it over to Julio.
Evening, council. Okay, so, uh, y'all asked for information on the addresses, so this is based off of addressing, not off consumption. Consumption data's a little harder to get, just because it's, uh, our system doesn't have great reporting as of, as of now, so, um, starting off, you can see zero and one are our highest users, which is Monday, uh, five is the one following after, but, um, as you can tell just by looking at the graph, I mean, those are the highest dates, you got zero and one on Monday, two and three on Tuesday, four and five Wednesday, six, seven is a Thursday, and then, of course, eight, nine is Friday, so it kind of starts to drop down a little bit. And, uh, the, the reasoning behind the zero ones and fives, because that's one of the questions I had, is, well, why, why are they so high, those numbers, and it's basically the jurisdiction that goes in and assigns the addresses, they usually do zero, one, five, we have large lots, so if you got five streets down the house, you got zero through five usually, I mean, so it's, and that's kind of how you get more zeros and ones and fives, because I was kind of questioning, why, why is that? So, that's a US Postal Service thing, and CPS and PEC kind of issue that stuff, so that's out of our control. So, just looking at the five day, this is our current, uh, distribution service, so, uh, Monday, as you can tell, is our highest peaking day. Those hours, if y'all recall, they do run throughout midnight, so come the morning time, the tanks are still trying to fill up while people are just shutting their watering systems off. So, uh, then you have Tuesday kind of pick up from there, of course, Wednesday, that's where five's at, so you have another spike in that, that usage, and then it continues to just kind of drop down. So, um, that's kind of what we see, we come to the plants, Monday mornings, that's what we see, is, you know, the pumps running, tanks are filling up. So, y'all recall from a couple of weeks ago, or the, maybe a month ago, when we had that issue, it was on a Monday, so. So, actually, the weekends, we don't have any watering days, so that's like our lowest time.
How do you know if it's from irrigation or just from home use?
We don't. Yeah, that's kind of hard to tell. Even if we pull the consumption data, we don't know unless we get down into the hours usage, which would be a little more difficult to get into, so. So, let me go ahead. Oh, so the challenges faced with the current watering days, of course, are, current watering schedule causes several peaking days throughout the week. You have the largest peak is on Monday due to the addressing. The city numbers of residents and commercial users, addresses are ending in zero and one are the larger than any other days. So, just throwing that in there as well, commercial, most of them are zero and one as well. So, addresses ending in five are the next run-up for the...
Largest group.
Give me a minute, because I thought... That's what I thought, okay. I was like, I know, I'm looking after... Okay, I was like, I thought we changed these, but... So, let me see if we can get the right. Yeah, there's a little, there's a couple of different differences in it, so let's see if we can get the right one up and going. You can't? Okay. We can. We can make some copies of these if you like, just so you can follow along, and I mean, most of the graphs are the same.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good.
Just keep on going, okay.
Rock and roll.
Okay, so one of the slides I was missing just kind of gives the options, which is the status quo. Okay, you have the option ones, you have, so I'm gonna just read off of this, basically. So, first slide should have been the status quo, seven-day distribution by service address, seven-day distribution by sequential service address, and then designated commercial watering day. So, option one, of course, is the status quo. That's currently what we have right now. You have the current watering schedule that causes the peaking factors that we just discussed. You have the commercial issues where there's one and five, zero, one, and five are the highest numbers. Commercial's packed in there as well due to the high water usage on Monday. The water tanks, you know, have a hard time just trying to refill. Like I said, the hours, just go ahead and roll over, so they're constantly just running. So, the pros are current water schedule is similar to all the utilities, just like Kelsey mentioned. We're similar to SAWs in that sense, and Bernie. Cons is it creates a peak and stresses out the plants. So, Sunday mornings, Monday mornings, like I said, when the guys come in, they can hear the pumps screaming. Basically, they're running, the pumps are trying to, the tanks are trying to fill up. You know, so usually by about 10, 11 o'clock, that's when we start to see people backing off because irrigation starts to slow down, and that's when we kind of start to catch back up. So, by the time we're leaving around five or so, we're kind of like, okay, well, hopefully the tanks catch up and fill up by the end of tonight so we can start irrigating again. So, that's kind of the peaking factor of it. The slide, like you mentioned, with the graphs is similar to without the line. So, option two goes into the seven-day distribution by service address. So, this one switches watering days from a more, just for more even distribution of services across the seven days. So, the method would be, the best-case scenario for distribution is it spreads the usage evenly across the week. Let's see if we can get it, go to the next slide. I think that one's on there. If it changes. Okay, well, I'll just continue. Y'all have the slides, so. So, this method would be the best-case scenario, like I mentioned. Fair Oaks Ranch City commercials accounts are not included in this graph, so we don't have the commercial accounts in here. However, they would be assigned to Tuesday for watering days that it's the lowest number assigned. The method would affect all accounts except for nine. Nine would stay the same. So, this is basically steady flow across the week, no large peaks, demand is easier. The cons is it's not sequential, and it's gonna require a lot of educating residents. So, y'all can look at the graph, and what we kind of refer to this graph as VFD. We use the VFDs at the plant, kind of helps even the flow. So, rather than having those quick ons and stay ons and shutdowns, this kind of evens flow throughout the week. So, it gives you that seven-day distribution. This is using Saturday and Sunday, and basically, we looked at... Yes, yeah. So, basically, what we looked at is we...
Okay.
We basically looked at what we could go ahead and do there. We looked at the numbers of service addresses and kind of worked them out to go ahead and make them even across the board. So, again, Tuesdays, we'd assign commercial. It's about 1% of our customers, so you got about 47 accounts that would go on there. So, option three, which is a seven-day distribution by sequential service address, is kind of the compromising where we can kind of work with the residents on this. So, this splits Monday service addresses to Sunday, and Monday, assigned commercial accounts to Saturday. So, we'd be affecting the, basically, the Monday watering days and the commercial. Currently, commercial doesn't have a designated watering day. It goes by the address. Some of the commercial accounts are some of the larger users. So, one of the things SAWs, for example, that they do, I think their commercial watering day is Saturday. So, we could assign them a day, which we'll have that further down. But this method would be an improvement in the terms of distribution is it spreads some of the high-peak usage across the week. The method, this method separates the most frequent service addresses, zero and one, into two days. So, Sunday would be the address ending in zero, Monday's the address ending in one. Fair Oaks Ranch Utility customers, commercial accounts would be assigned Saturday for watering days to assist in lowering demand during the week. And this method would only affect commercial accounts and homes ending in zero. So, the pros is it's gonna help spread out the demand and the peaking days. It does not affect a large number of Fair Oaks Ranch customers. Again, cons, well, it's gonna require increased education for the customers. It does affect, which would be the commercial and homes ending in zero, so that would be something we'd push out. So, when you go to option three, there you go. You can see where, if we were to go ahead and separate it, Monday kind of just ramps up, hit five. We tried looking at what we could do at five, but because four and six are right there next to them with high numbers, we really can't separate it to be four and five or five and six. So, we kind of, you know, four and five is gonna be a high-peaking number again, but it kind of just shows a wave effect. You get to commercial. Commercial would be a little bit more easier to go ahead and monitor as well because they'd be assigned a certain date. So, if we saw HOAs watering, or we saw the country club, or anybody watering days they're not supposed to, we could easily stop them throughout the week and say, hey, your day's on Saturday. So, that would help out there. Zeros would go ahead and fall onto Sundays. So, again, you have a little wave effect. It's not the full effect of making it even across the board, but it does help us out. So, then option four is just designating the commercial watering day. So, even if we were to say we didn't want to do any of this, the current watering day schedule remains unchanged, but move commercial watering days to Saturday, which, again, would follow similar to what SAWs does. So, this method would be an improvement in terms of consumption from Monday and Wednesdays, high-peak usage for Fair Oaks Ranch Utility residents. Account demand would remain unchanged, so residents would still have the same dates. Their demand wouldn't change, but it would help us on monitoring those commercial accounts that water Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
How much water does that, do the 47 commercial accounts use?
In a month, we pulled that information up, and within a month, they were using about five, a little over 5 million gallons, about 1.2 million gallons a week that just the commercial accounts use.
But if you take the club out of that...
Yeah, I don't remember what the club was exactly. We looked at just the whole number for all the commercial accounts. I don't recall what the club was exactly, but we could get that information.
Relief?
That would help. I mean, that is at least some help there, because now you're assigning that 1.2 million gallons is getting spread out throughout the week to one day, so that would be a step forward. The way we looked at it is, we're basically in the worst-case scenario you can be in right now with the big peaks. Anything we do is an improvement, so. So, this method would, again, so currently, commercial accounts for the current watering dates. Many of their days fall on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and are generally high-user customers. This method would only affect Fair Oaks Ranch City customer accounts, commercial accounts. So, would not affect residential accounts. Fair Oaks Ranch City commercial accounts are generally high-water users. And then the cons are just peak demand. Fair Oaks Ranch residents' accounts will still exist. So, we still have the residential factor, but, you know, the commercial account helps out just a little bit there. Go ahead and... See if we can go to...
What?
She may not have it on that one. So, I'll continue to go through the slides. I know you'll have them in front of you. So, the current watering days for commercial accounts, like we mentioned, so you have Monday, and it kind of just drops down throughout the week. You can see, again, Monday's the highest user. You got 17, not as many fives. So, again, Monday, commercial's a big peaking factor. So, that would help out if we were to just go ahead and assign them a day, make it a little easier too for Robert to monitor if we needed to. So, status quo on commercial watering days, you basically move 1% of whatever we're using throughout the week to that Saturday. So, again, it's a step forward. And then, of course, you have the graph. Yes, that's the right one. So, this graph compares all four of them, and you can kind of see, again, Monday's still the high and peaking factor. The only time it drops down is when we go ahead and either go to the proposed seven-day schedule or the seven-day sequential schedule. You start to see a drop there. You can kind of see the wave effects on them. If you stick with option one, which is a five-day schedule and the commercial day, it's kind of just falling the same way we're operating now, aside from the commercial moving. So, on our end, of course, the best route would be go with the VFD method, like we mentioned, which is, of course, it gives you just that even flow across the week. However, that's kind of where we're looking for council's feedback, because that's not in sequence. It's different than other utilities. So, again, it's gonna take a lot of educating. I know we're not looking to do anything now, but just something to keep in mind.
Julio, I have a question on this graph.
Yeah.
So, the yellow is commercial.
The yellow is, so the yellow is actually everything. That's if you go ahead and go with the commercial changes only. So, that includes the residential in that. So, that's why if you look at the blue graph and the yellow one, they're the same exact, they're pretty much same exact numbers. The only thing that changes, you have the 1% on Saturday.
Doesn't really change the peak that much.
Yeah, so having, doing just the commercial isn't gonna change much.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, I had just a couple of questions. On the recommended schedule that would stretch watering across the weekend, are there any challenges that that would present to staff as far as monitoring on those days?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then, aside from altering the water days, what other options? Have y'all talked about any other options that could help from, you know, preventing the problem that we had where the tanks are almost running out? Like, what are other options to solve this, aside from moving the water days?
More storage, and we are moving forward with CIP projects on that. We have the Plant 5 ground storage tank project that we're working on. You have the elevated storage tank that's in the works.
And remind me when that, when, I don't know the dates on that off the top of my head. Does anybody know?
The ground storage tank?
Yeah.
We're hoping to have that online by 2024, so.
Early part, late part?
Probably later, later part of the year.
I knew that was coming. I just couldn't remember when it was. Okay, that's what I figured during its role would be. Thanks.
Yeah, and during these peaking days, one of the biggest things we found when we looked at consumption data is during the week, I mean, we hit 3 million gallons on a daily basis. We don't have 3 million gallons worth of storage sitting around. That's one of the struggles that we face. We're using more water than we can store on a daily basis.
And do you think, knowing that we have that coming, do you still think this is necessary based off when that?
I would still make the recommendation to a minimum, maybe move the commercial days, just because, again, they, you have them watering Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, which are the three peaking days. So, even that 1% that we can move over, that's 1.2 million gallons that you take out of the equation for those three days. So, even that would make a small impact from where we're at right now.
Primarily, we're talking HOAs, is that the...
HOAs, the country club, and anybody else that's irrigating. So, that would, again, that would be the proposed seven-day sequential schedule where it doesn't affect a whole lot of people. So, on the summary, go to the next slide, Christina. And so, on the summary of everything, you know, update the water conservation goes with the current data. That's an update that goes based on these numbers. Updating the watering day schedule to option two, so option two, again, is the seven-day. It's an even across the board. The con is just it's not in sequence. So, we'd be going a different route than most of the utilities go. So, you know, some of the additional options, I guess, if Kelsey wants to talk to you, go ahead and go over them.
Yeah, additional options. We'll look into what we talked about with SAWs already, and we'll speak with Dan regarding that, about enforcement mechanisms for that. A couple of other options that we could update within the water conservation plan as a whole is shortening allowable watering hours, and that could go year-round or summer months only. This is just to, right now, it's 14 hours of watering hours, allowable watering hours on your watering day, so that could be shortened to something smaller, maybe 5:00 to 10:00 a.m. instead of midnight to 10:00 a.m. And that also is something that could happen only partially of the year. So, summer months where usage and the strain on our utilities and infrastructure is highest, that could be something that we could look into further if that's something that council would be interested in. And lastly, drip irrigation is allowed anytime or any day, so that is also something that we can look into that it could still be allowed any day, but maybe that could, since it's a form of irrigation, it could abide by watering hours just like regular irrigation times as well.
Hard unless you have an automatic system for drip irrigation for people that just use hoses, you know, the drip hoses, you know?
Yep.
From midnight till, you know, at midnight, you're getting up, you know, at all hours in the morning trying to run those.
I wouldn't consider, you're talking about like a drip hose that someone hooks up. I wouldn't, to me, that's hand-watering. That's not, that's not...
I don't think it's looked at that way, though.
So, he's talking about a hose that's just hooked up into your faucet that you ran through your garden, and you turn it on for an hour every day. That's what type of drip you're talking about, right?
So, drip irrigation systems can be hooked up to automatic timers just like regular irrigation systems.
Right, and that's what we have. Everything's on a timer, separate timer. But what you're talking about, I don't think is considered drip.
Okay.
But I would want her to clarify.
What are you meaning?
You go and, you know, to a big box store there, and you buy a drip, a drip irrigation hose that just drips as opposed to, is a regular hose, and you hook it up to your, you set it before you go to bed and, you know, at midnight, and you wake up the next morning and you turn it off, you know? Unless you're, unless you have a full-on electronic watering system for a drip, trying to, I guess, trying to, I think trying to monitor drip irrigation other than off and on is difficult.
Scott, I'm not trying to, like, I'm just trying to make sure we're understanding what you're saying. So, are you saying they're, they're hooking this up to their irrigation system that they can run on a timer? Or are you saying they're literally screwing it into the faucet on the wall?
I guess I'm just looking for clarification, what that means would...
So, there are, there are multiple different types of drip irrigation systems. There are different versions of that. Some are buried underneath the ground, some are the little wires, the little black nozzles that's been... And then, there's also soaker hoses, which is the type that...
I'm thinking soaker hose, wrong word.
Yeah, soaker hoses would not be considered drip irrigation in watering.
So, you could use those anytime?
It also wouldn't be considered hand-watering either.
It wouldn't?
So, hand-watering is whenever you have, it has, you have to have a positive shut-off nozzle, so you're standing out there hand-watering, so you have a hose with a nozzle and you're hand-watering. That's in your hand. A soaker hose, it could be, I can look into that for you. I can look for clarification on that, because... I will definitely look into that. I think it's...
You're thinking it's drip, right? Yeah, me too.
I think it would be...
It's a gray area.
It's a gray area. I'll look at the actual definition of it and see what the general consensus is.
Asking for a friend. Would like to know. Okay. Oh, I know what it looks like. I'm asking, what does it fall under our policy? But it doesn't fall under drip?
The purpose of drip irrigation is because it's supposed to be more water conservation savvy. I don't believe a soaker hose conserves water as much as what a drip irrigation system would. It would be similar to a hose. Yes. Yep.
But can you use a soaker hose any day at any time?
So, soaker hose is not specifically outlined in the water conservation plan. That's something we can add on... So s- soaker hose is not specifically outlined in the water conservation plan, that's something we can add on whether that has to abide by watering hours or that could be at any time or any day, that's something that we could add. It wouldn't be a handheld hose, which is what's outlined or defined currently, but that's not something that we couldn't add since we, we are looking to see what type of adjustments, if any, we would like to make to the plan.
Eat the gel something. I, I was going to add, add um a question or maybe a comment, the second bullet to shorten the allowable watering hours, I don't see how that benefits anyway, in fact, I think it hurts because now you're cramming people's watering into a shorter period rather than space throughout a certain, if you're watering at night from ten to eight AM, changing that from midnight or five AM to eight AM would put more strain on your system, I would think, for um the peaks. And so I don't see how that adds a lot of value, it, especially right now that we're watering at night on your day.
Yeah, the, the, the purpose would be to shorten the amount of allowable hours in an effort to shorten the amount of time you water rather than, than cram it all into two hours when normally it's watered for six hours. The, the intention behind it, just like with watering hours in the, in the first place, is to limit the amount of time or the amount of water used during that time.
And I think for a lot of people that would accomplish that, like my case where they installed twenty-two sections, but, but.
You've got twenty-two sections?
Twenty-two zones, so it would shorten mine because I can't get through all of them in that amount of time, so for me, it would definitely work, but if you're, if you're a normal person and you only have ten or twelve or fifteen maybe, it, it probably wouldn't shorten their watering time.
So you're a violator and an over consumer. Yeah, let's uh, what do we need to wind, what do y'all need to wind this up?
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I personally think I like the gray graph. And I, the reason for that is because it, it does seem kind of consistent. It brings the, the peaks down and it would require the least amount of re-education to the actual residential uses. Um so that's why I like that one, instead of the green graph. Just because I think the green graph is gonna, it's gonna change up so many people's watering, it literally like almost everybody's watering day is going to be different now, so you're going to have to go door to door to every single resident and make sure that they know that their day is not their day. Um and if you have people who've lived here for thirty years and have had the same day for thirty years, it's, it's, I feel like it's going to be super overwhelming for you guys to do the education on that.
So in this, if it the reason we get, what are we trying to fix? So the reason we got into this is because we had a, an overuse and we, we tend to have that overuse on Monday and Tuesdays throughout this. So the fix is, how do we get away from that so that we're not depleting our water supplies? And wondering if we're going to have the available water we need to get through Monday and Tuesday, is that?
Yes, sir.
And so i- if what Emily provided, if that's a, a good resolution by your standard that we can get through this, then it's probably a good option, it's the least disruptive if it meets the requirements of what we're trying to fix.
Yes, sir, and tha- and that's the feedback we're looking for. So.
I, I think I would be more concerned if we didn't have that plan to have the groundwater storage tank and elevated storage tank inflated already.
Yeah.
Um I would be more concerned, but I think we could do some action now and knowing that that's coming. I feel a little bit less worried, yeah.
I agree with you, Laura.
Okay. So really, then it just becomes a, a how and when.
So work to be done for sure, but I, I think you helped answer the, the primary two questions that we were looking for, that you outlined there at the start of this, which is are we at least interested in exploring higher enforcement options? I think the answer is yes. And are we interested in exploring a, a, a potential change in watering days, at least for certain customers or certain times? I think the answer is yes, based on what I'm hearing, so our charge is to come back to you with, with, with plans for both of those.
Okay.
And soaker hoses.
I liked this presentation a lot, I liked that you had it all laid out, had your recommendations, I think it was great.
Well done.
You're welcome.
Well done.
Well done.
Yeah, great job, both of you. Anything else you need on this, or?
No.
Okay. That completes the workshop items that we had for tonight. Um does any council members have any announcements that they would like to make? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Yes.
Um just one announcement, we've talked enough about water conservation, everybody knows that we're in stage two. This past week, we did the town hall meeting and Grant and Public Works team presented two surveys that are now out there on the, they're on the city website and other opportunities to gauge it or to go through it. The first uh is to look at uh what it is that we want to do with upgrades or the reconstruction project related to Detail Corn Road, which is the eastern portion east of Farrosh Parkway. Uh one thing that I'll pass on to that is, that is a uh, it's a damaged piece of road that cannot be, is it fair? It's damaged, uh we cannot resurface it to repair it, it has to be reconstructed. Is that Detail Corn east of the Parkway, between the Parkway and thirty-three fifty-one? And so, yeah, right out here in front of, so we know we're going to have to yeah, reconstruct it, and so in that process, what do the residents want to see as part of that reconstruction process? It could be the exact same road that it is today. I mean, but since we're going to go through a full reconstruction, we'd just like to know what the preferences are of the residents. That's what the survey that's out there. The other survey out there is multimodal, uh there's been questions about what do we want to see as part of multimodal activities across the city. And we'd encourage all residents to take it, I don't know, I believe we're three hundred? Four hundred, somewhere in there? Yeah, the link is on the website. And Scott, that's all I got.
Uh just a few, uh marker calendars coming up. Um I mentioned last time, household hazardous waste collections, September twenty-third, Saturday morning at Sybilow Creek Church, that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Um we are um planning national night out, that's coming up quickly. Um on Tuesday, October third, be the date for that, so um you'll be seeing our, our marketing materials on that shortly, but, but mark that down, October third, right, right lieutenant? And we have confirmed that we will be holding trucker street at the school, the Farrosh Elementary Parking Lot um right across the street here on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. And that will be in the, I guess I would consider the back parking lot, the one closest to here at the, at the elementary school.
All right.
City Council overflow parking?
Yes, yes.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Um is there any uh consideration items that any council member would like added to a future council meeting? All right. And it'll break your heart, but I have no need to go into executive session tonight unless y'all. Right. Okay. Um with that, uh from the council, anything else we need? Christina, anything?
Yes, sir.
You need, and Scott, anything we missed or? I have, the time now is eleven oh five and we are adjourned.